We have a motion, needs a second if we're going to.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yep.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
Oh, sorry, I didn't have that.
Can I?
You can speak to your motion, sorry, yes.
Yeah, given the agenda that we have, I'd like to, and we have other topics to discuss on this, discuss on this, or other agenda things that we're going to be discussing and meeting on this agenda item. So I think this can go towards the end because we'll have continued discussions afterwards, there will be no action.
Councilmember Valdrama.
Yeah, I'm opposed to that motion. The agenda has been published, we have people that are here to speak directly to that subject. It has always been the custom, I am president of this council, to move to get the people who came to speak out first, so I do not support moving it back.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, we had a discussion on this, I think it was last week or the week before, I'm sorry, I don't remember which, but recently. This is to get the public comment and to open the public hearing, and we will continue it later, so again, to move this to the end of the agenda is really just going to delay and force people who may be here to speak to it to miss their opportunity or to have to stay late, and I don't, there's no, there's no action that we're taking tonight that would require us to push it out, so I think that that's just inconvening the public who would like to speak to that.
I would encourage my fellow councilmembers to support this motion because we had emails from folks saying they wanted to speak specifically to the moratorium, and that would allow those folks who are probably here in bulk to speak to that issue and then move on, so. Seeing no more lights, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by vote of four, three, we will be moving item number 15 to the end of the public hearings. Okay, next we will have, oh, and then we need to formally, so we need to adopt the entire agenda however, so I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I've got a couple more amendments.
Well, okay, go ahead.
I guess I'll go with the executive, I'd like to add an executive session before the, what's currently 19 on our agenda. And to discuss litigation, to discuss litigation in the executive session before number 19.
Ongoing or potential?
To discuss litigation, risks, and ongoing.
Okay, so we have a motion, we need a second, we need to discuss it.
Second?
I'll second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of adding the executive session to the agenda prior to item 19, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, Councilmember Ritchie, I'm sorry, I didn't hear verbally.
Aye.
Okay, so vote of five to two, we will put in an executive session prior to item 19, which is the moratorium. Okay, so I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I have an amendment.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
If we are going to add an executive session, I would like to move what was originally item 15 to before the executive session. I don't, again, I don't think we should make people wait until after an executive session for an item.
I don't know that you can move that though, since you were on the losing end of the vote, to move it the first time. Is that accurate?
But is it the same issue?
It's a different, it's a different amendment.
He was asking just to have the executive session precede whenever item number 15 is taken up.
No, I want, I want item 15 to happen before an executive session on a whole different topic, so that people who are here to speak to that don't have to wait until after our executive session.
The previous amendment established the order as between current items 15 and 19, so it sounds like this amendment would just establish a timing of an executive session.
Okay.
Is that correct?
So when do you want it? Exactly?
If 15 is after 19, David, I don't know how you put the executive session before 15, because when I'm proposing it, it goes before 19.
Oh, I see, okay, yeah. Then I think, I think that issue has already been decided, so unless somebody on the winning side of that previous motion moves to reconsider, then it would stay where it is.
So what's the status of it now?
The order is staying as is unless somebody that was on the winning end of that vote wants to reconsider and move the executive session.
Or to reconsider having the people wait?
It's moving the executive session, so.
They've got waiting, I'm afraid either way.
Well, they're going to have to wait till after the executive session now.
Okay, well, so we've established the order, order of the agenda, Councilmember Ritchie.
Order of the agenda, as it stands now, what's proposed.
So everything, we haven't gotten to the consent yet, but after presentations, the public hearings, we would have the number 16, 17, 18, executive session 19, and then 15.
That just violates all of our precedents we've ever done and said.
Point of order, we're going, we're following the parliamentary procedures, we've decided, there's no comment needed.
What's he pointing at?
Okay, Councilmember Ritchie.
Just want to clarify that, if I hear what you said correctly, Councilmember Hornish's agenda move was to move the 15, the homegrown, to after number 19.
That's correct.
And then the second step was to move an executive session prior to number 19, the moratorium review, is that accurate?
That's correct, we've already, we've already passed the first part of that, so the current motion was to put in executive session before 19.
And that passed.
No, we haven't voted on that yet.
Okay.
No, we did, yes, we have the executive session, yes.
At this point, that's where things stand, both have passed.
Correct.
Unless somebody on the winning side.
And no one has, no one has done that, so. Okay, so now we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye.
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 Okay, by a vote of five to, the motion, the agenda passes. Councilmember Ritchie, did you have something else?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, next we'll have public comment, this is an opportunity for the public to address the council, three-minute limit per person, or five minutes of representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you would like to show a video or a PowerPoint, it must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 PM the end of business day to the city clerk, Melanie Anderson, at manderson@smamish.us. Please be aware, council meetings are videotaped and available to the public. I will remind everyone that if you are planning to make public comment relative to any of the public hearings that we have, you want to wait, because you will not become part of that public record for that hearing if you make your public comment now, so that would be the moratorium, anything related to level of service at intersections, and our concurrency work, and also the Smamish Homegrown. So first on this, I have Deb Sogi.
I'm going to pass away for the hearing.
Very good. Next, I have Swarnima, and I apologize, I'm not, I don't want to butcher your last name. Just need your name and address, please.
My name is Swarnima Ashwin Kumar, I'm a resident of Smamish, I live at 23226 Northeast 14th Place. I serve on the board for the Lake Washington PTSA, I'm also a member of the leadership board of the Eastside Refugee and Immigrant Coalition, or ERIC, and on behalf of ERIC, I wish to thank you Mayor Malchow and members of council for the welcoming week proclamation, which is on tonight's consent agenda. ERIC coordinates the National Welcoming Week celebration annually across the east side. This year, there are over 25 events hosted by multiple community partners. The week is more than a celebration, it's the culmination of year-round work that ERIC does in partnership with cities and organizations. The city of Smamish is a member of ERIC. Welcoming goes beyond community events and the kindness shown between neighbors. We strive to institutionalize welcoming through policies, practices, and programs, so that all people experience a sense of safety and belonging. ERIC's executive director, Debbie Lacy, appreciated hearing Mayor Malchow's comments at the Leadership Eastside event last Friday, such as exploring how to provide city information in different languages to reach more residents. ERIC is a resource and a partner, and we'd be happy to support the city's efforts moving forward. As the mayor shared at that event, one out of every four Smamish residents is foreign-born, and our region continues to become increasingly diverse. Along with the cultural richness that diversity brings, there can be also a division and community tension. Some longtime residents may experience a sense of disconnect as they deal with the changes, including communication challenges when trying to relate to new neighbors. New immigrants can feel isolated and unsure about how to get involved in the community. Welcoming efforts help bridge these differences and challenges so that everyone can benefit. This Friday from 6:30 to 8:00 PM, the Smamish YMCA is hosting a Welcoming Week World Celebrations event. There are many other events throughout the east side, and the event calendar is available at ericmembers.org. We hope you can come and participate in Welcoming Week, thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Mark Cross, followed by Christine White and Bruce Heath.
Thank you for letting this happen before the rest of your meeting. My name's Mark Cross, I live at 247 208th Avenue Northeast in Smamish, and I wanted to talk to you tonight about a consent agenda item, the Water Quality Repair and Habitat Monitoring Plan. I've read this plan over the weekend, and I wanted to, and I wanted to comment and commend staff for meeting with me yesterday to answer questions, and I think that the council has given good direction to staff to develop this plan, I appreciate the general direction, the monitoring effort that it represents is going to be a significant improvement, and that the information you get's going to help with water quality, but it'll also help inform the land use decisions you're going to make in the future. I would point out though, that the actual plan, the 60-page document, has really only been available, I think, since Friday, when your, your package went up on the, on the web, rather than being available to the public or shared with other agencies. I have three bullets, I'll drop two of them and just get to the second one, which is that the plan includes water quality testing for Zaccoose Creek, really for the first time, which is significant because of the new culverts that you've helped pay for, and because we have a basin plan that's being done for Zaccoose Creek. But there has been no water quality sampling, and that plan needs water quality sampling, and my key request is that you find a way with perhaps the tribes, perhaps with other partners, to pay for some water quality sampling during November, December, January, when the, the cokingy are actually using the new culvert, so we can understand whether they might be reacting positively or negatively to the new culverts and stream, or whether it's actually water quality that's a challenge. And I think that would be important, is to have that sooner rather than later. The other thing is, is that the plan makes no mention of the, the Smamish Water District or the 3,500 septic tanks that remain in the city of Smamish. You know, it talks about testing for E. coli and different things in the water, but it doesn't really talk about failed septic tanks or outmoded equipment being used. You know, Don Jaren, back in the day on the council, was the one who would check my math when I, whenever I'd start spouting numbers. So here's the numbers, if you have approximately 3,500 septic tanks, some on very small lots, some on big ones that work fine, but 3,500 tanks, if people use 80 gallons a day, and I mean for everything in their house, the sinks, the toilets, the showers, the tubs, the dishwashers, the washing machines, and 80 gallons is a relatively conservative number, and then you multiply that times 365, you come up with 1,000,002,200,000 gallons a year into our ground. And so I think there is a relationship, and I think the, the water district would appreciate the cooperation that you would show in communicating with them on this subject, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Christine White, Bruce Heath, and then Jane Garrison.
Good evening, I'm Christine White, and I live at 21237 Northeast 14th Place in Smamish, and I'm here on behalf of Eastside Baby Corner, a nonprofit organization in, located in Issaquah, Kenmore, and Bremerton. And I'm here to thank you for tonight presenting the proclamation in honor of National Diaper Need Awareness Week, which is next week. EBC, or Eastside Baby Corner, commits to providing a safety net to children and families by providing free-of-charge basic essentials to children birth through age 12. These essentials include diapers, and also car seats, clothing, formula, beds and bedding, toys, books, and so much more. We do not provide direct service to families, instead, we support the work of the experts, social workers, nurses, teachers, by providing them the ability to order from us online on a weekly basis. We collect the stuff from our respective communities and redistribute new and gently-used items to families in our region. EBC provides necessities to kids through 145 programs from our 50 agency partners. In the Smamish area, we work directly with Lake Washington and Issaquah School Districts, Imagine Housing, and more. This year, we are projecting that we will again be supplying more than 1 million diapers in our region. We cannot do this without the support of the community, and the outstanding support that we receive from the city of Smamish. We thank you again for your continued support of EBC and for recognizing National Diaper Need Awareness Week. With that, I would like to share a brief video with you that highlights the importance of diapers and your help, thank you.
Oh.
Because it's such a basic need that every family needs, I don't think I've had any family that didn't need diapers at one point from me, and it's, it just relieves so much stress on them. I've had a lot of parents, during the years I've been helping them, that have talked about going back to school, but it also means that they're not bringing that income in anymore that they were able to provide for basic needs for their family. They know that I'm here for them, and they know that Eastside Baby Corner is here for them. Going back to school changes their whole life. Getting a degree means that they won't need help in the future, and the odds are, if children see their parents go to school, they're going to want to go to college. I need to make sure that kids are safe, and I need to make sure that I'm providing resources for parents so that they can keep their kids safe. One of the ways that I do that is I ask parents if they have a car seat, and if the car seat is the correct car seat for their child's weight and height. And I've had many situations where a parent had to make the decision whether or not they were going to go back to someone's house who was hurting them, to go get their car seat for their baby, or come to school without a car seat, put them in the car without a car seat, drive there, be worried the whole time. As soon as I found out, I said, "Don't worry, borrow my car seat first, take mine, and then I'm going to get you a car seat from Baby Corner." And I was able to get them a car seat that day, helps them to trust me, and that makes them trust me for all sorts of things, they feel that they can trust me to help them find a provider for, for their child's vision, and getting new glasses, and having me call around to try and find someone that takes their insurance, because that can be really stressful, and that starts with safety.
Bruce Heath.
Yes.
Okay, Jane Garrison.
I'm speaking on the House of Representatives as well.
So that would be under the public hearing, if you want it to be on the record. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
John Galvin, 19502 Southeast 16th Street, Smamish. I'm appalled, and I am outraged at Mr. Hornish's manipulation of this council process, and the cooperation he's receiving from Mayor Malchow, which appears to be very rapid and indicates that there has been some prior consultation between the two. I'm not absolutely sure, but when I see somebody second something that rapidly, it tells me that there has been some discussion. I remind councilmembers that you are elected to serve all of the people of Smamish, not your own personal interest, this is not a place for you to carry out a vengeance, a vendetta against the city because of prior difficulties with the city, and this manipulation of the council process does not serve us, the citizens, it serves you and Mr. Hornish's personal agenda. So I'm appalled, and I'm outraged, thank you.
Mr. Galvin, I'd like to at least address your comments, because we got an email from Deb Sogi from the Chamber of Commerce, asking for moving up things, and that is why you heard a, a motion and why I seconded it. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, we need a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, I'd like to actually pull item number seven, which is the adopting of a new city brand, and we can put that under unfinished business. Councilmember Ritchie.
Malchow, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so all those in favor of the consent calendar as amended, with item number seven being tucked under unfinished business, oh, Deputy Mayor Moran, do you have?
Nope.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, by vote of seven, zero, the consent calendar as amended is approved. Okay, so the first thing we will have is a presentation, we have the 2019-2020 Eastside Fire and Rescue Budget, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, you have Chief Clark here, and he is going to present the budget to you this evening. So Chief, I'll let you have it.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Manager, I appreciate the opportunity to present our first two-year budget to you. Also with me is Deputy Chief John Parkinson, who's responsible for putting our budgets together at Eastside. As a, as just a quick refresher, Eastside Fire and Rescue is venturing into its first two-year budget process, we started this process back in June. Your Councilmember Valdrama and Deputy Mayor Moran sit on Eastside Fire and Rescue, and Deputy Mayor Moran is a member of our FAC, or our Finance and Administration Committee. We task the Finance and Administration Committee with working through the budget, and what you're going to see is an abbreviated version of some of the slides that the FAC has received since July, and I'm going to do my best to summarize this, to get you to the point where we are today. Our goal at EFOR is to adopt our budget on October 11th at the regular EFOR board meeting, and so far, everything that I'm going to show you today has been recommended and is moving forward in the FAC process. The FAC will have their final meeting on this next Monday, I believe it's the 24th or the 26th, but this next Monday will be the FAC meeting, and as long as everything goes as smoothly as has been, this will be recommended for final adoption at the October 11th meeting, when your board members will be asked to take action on it. So first of all, I'd like to just go through some comparisons that we provide every year, you'll see that when you look at tax rate equivalent, EFOR here is compared with other like-size agencies throughout King County and Pierce and Snohomish County, and you'll see from an AV evaluation that EFOR is doing quite well, achieving our goal of being one of the most efficient and cost-effective fire services in the region. It was, we work out, as we break out budget AV in comparison, and the reason this says Zone 1 comparison, Zone 1 are our neighboring departments, all departments that are in King County, basically north of I-90, and this is where we sit. Mercer Island, of course, is doing quite well on the AV here, but they're a much smaller operation than what EFOR is, and here, demonstrating, breaking out our component cities from EFOR, you see Issaquah North Bend and Smamish, you'll see that Smamish is doing quite well when compared to Mercer Island as, as well. Next comparison, again, we're looking at the zone, which are comparable departments in our area. When we look at firefighters per population, this is a common metric within the fire service, not necessarily in and of itself a valid metric, so I caution you with using it with too much, but it's a way for us to compare, and you can see that when we look at our staffing levels, and this is total full-time equivalence, you can see that we are staffed lower than what the rest of our cities in Zone 1, our communities are in Zone 1, but we are achieving all of our intended outcomes and benefits, so there, there's no reason to be staffed at a higher level at this point. Budget per population, again, just another metric to compare with the cities around us, and I know I'm going, for the audience, I know I'm going fast through this, but this is something that's been in your packet, and you have reviewed before, I'll be happy to stop for any questions you may have. Cost per capita, when you break out by the city, the cities within the EFOR partnership. And then comparisons with cities, this is something that I started when I arrived almost three years ago, this simply demonstrates, it's a metric for us to see in the, in the budget that we are proposing, our average annual budget over the last eight years is a 3.58% increase. Up here, cost of living is something that, that drives a lot of government budgets, and this is just to check with our city partners to see where we are in comparison, it's simply meant as a comparison to file away for future reference, when we're trying to compare where we are. So the first part of the, of the budget, of course, is looking at our revenue, how revenue works for Eastside is a quick review, all revenue that is non-partner currently, that does not come directly from the partners in the form of payment, is collected, and basically taken off the top before we get into our funding formula. You'll see the non-partner revenue listed here, I don't intend to go through every item, but of course, at the FAC level, we have, and I would say that those folks that are on the, on the EFOR board are conversant with this, the one piece that I do want to talk a little bit about is the GEMT, that is a new revenue source. We have recommended, and we have, and it is being supported at this point, as we move forward, we have a very small GEMTE earmark. What this is, is something that was passed through the state about two years ago, it has to do with transport revenue reimbursement on the Medicaid funding stream. Again, I don't want to get too technical and get too far into the details, but it increases the revenue that is available to us. We are working with a consultant through our billing company to ascertain what that is, we've changed some practices, and as you'll see on this next slide, next year, in 2019, we are plugging in a $75,000 per year increase due to that GEMT, we actually, there is potential that that line item could go up to as much as $600,000 or $700,000 even next year. What we've elected to do is a FAC, because we do not, we have not started collecting that, our recommendation is that if that does come in, we will simply park it in the reserve funds that we have, and at our next budget gathering, we will determine what to do with that funding. It's not something we're going we do this with our carryover or with our fund balance before we move into any of the budget assumptions. So this current budget assumes that we are fully funding our liability reserve, which is a number that includes our sick leave liability, our vacation leave liability on the books, and our projected replacement costs for firefighters that may leave during the budget cycle. We take that total number and we put 10% of that off in reserve. That reserve sits somewhere between $900,000 and $1 million currently. The fully fund our 10% operating fund contingency reserve is also a piece of this budget. You see here the revenue. Besides the GEMT, the other thing I'll call out for you is the Snoqualmie Tribe, which is a contract where we provide services to the Snoqualmie Tribe that you negotiated as a board about three years ago, and we started collecting. It was the board's decision at that time not to include it in our revenue projections per se, and to earmark it to help build the liability reserve fund. We have recommended, and it's been supported at this point, that because the GEMT question mark that we have coming in, that we include the Snoqualmie Tribe as part of our ongoing revenue at this point. It's proven to be a stable revenue source, and it's time to move it in. And that's why you see it goes from zero to 354,000 in 2019. The rest of what you see here are standard projections or formulas that are based on contracts that we have that we feel relatively certain will be coming in. Next, this goes back to July 5th. This was our original expense summary. The reason I included this slide was simply to talk about some of the items. Each time we get together with the FAC, these numbers change a little bit, and on Monday they will change again. Our goal is to come in at less than what these numbers are, so this gives you an idea. That's our goal, but we certainly come in around this area, which is about a 3.96% increase in 2019 and about a 2.1% increase in 2020. That's the framework we've been working about, and I'm going to get into some of the specifics of the bigger increases here in a minute in a couple of slides. Now, on August 1st, we got some of our revenue projections and some of our expense projections cleaned up, and you'll see that we're currently at roughly a 3.55% increase in 2019 and a 2.4% increase in 2020. We have since received a few more items that will be explained on Monday. I'm not going to release those yet. I'll wait until the FAC has had the ability to hear from that. But after Monday, those numbers should become final, and that's what will be referred to the October 11th meeting. Now, overall, as far as the major initiatives, those of you that have been involved with EFOR for the last couple of years, you know we've undergone an extensive standards of response coverage process where we evaluate our resources, evaluate our deployment models. We targeted a few goals with those deployment models in the last year, year and a half, which included going to a dedicated aid car system in what we're calling our urban core, which is the Sammish and Issaquah area. There are six stations in Sammish and Issaquah. Currently, our units go back and forth. If it's an EMS call, they get in an aid car. If it's a fire call, they jump on their engine. This is a very expensive model to operate two vehicles out of a station, and it's also can prove to be inefficient when a fire call comes in and your fire units are actually all in aid units, which do not have water, do not have hose, and cannot effectively combat a fire, and significantly slow the response. Urban area, which Issaquah and Sammish by definition meet the definition of an urban area, and urban response from a fire service requires a dedicated engine and ladder system with dedicated aid units. So one of our initiatives has been to add dedicated aid units to this part of our service area. What our current budget does is it adds two units to Sammish and Issaquah. One is a 12-hour unit, one is a 24-hour unit, which should handle the load that we need, and it would allow us to dedicate resources to the engine and the ladder. If we were to add a 24-hour unit, just add to our budget, it would be $942,000 add. That is not what we're doing. Again, I'll explain that here in a minute, but I wanted to give that for, as far as one of the evaluation tools that we're using to decide which way to go with this. Our standards of cover, this is a map that should be familiar to any of you that have seen it. These red dots, which are hard to see, the large red dots, are our six current stations, and that's what's demonstrated in our urban core currently. Sorry, this slide's out of order. I should have put this slide last, but this is also an identified need within our strategic planning process, which occurred two and a half years ago, is that we needed a second response battalion for our supervision. Currently, we have one response battalion for nine career stations and 190 square miles. It's a tremendous amount of area to cover and nearly impossible to get to all of our stations in one day from a supervisor unit that also has to respond to calls. If we were to add a unit on its own for the second response battalion, that would be nearly another $600,000. Instead, what we've recommended and has been supported to this point is repurposing Station 81, which is one of your Sammish stations, it's your Pine Lake station, putting a 12-hour aid unit or one of those dedicated aid units in that station for 12 hours a day, putting the other 24-hour aid unit at Stations 72, and then taking the resources from repurposing Station 81, we can accomplish the two dedicated aid units and the 24-hour battalion response unit for a net add of 548,000, as opposed to what the same resources would cost us as just a direct add to the budget of just over $2 million, which is why we are moving forward in this fashion. Our modeling, which you'll see in this map, and again, it's just a one-dimensional map. I know it's hard to interact with this visually, but you'll see what this does is the two dedicated aid units provide us a dynamic responsibility. These units will move around the area, the urban area, to take care of the areas when we get busy, where we get busy, and we can shift resources, and it splits our current resources. We actually provides us, rather than six response resources like we have today, we'll actually have seven response resources during the day. We run 2/3rds of our calls in the first 12 hours from about 8:00 in the morning to 8:00 at night. We run 33% of our calls from 8:00 at night to 8:00 in the morning. So we'll actually have a peak resource during the day rather than having a constant resource all night.
Chief Clark, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
For our edification as well as the public's. So repurposing 81 a 12-hour dedicated aid unit there, does that mean there's no engine there now?
That's correct. There would be no engine overnight. Our resources still, again, for those of us that, for those of you that have seen our standards of response coverage, we still model and cover the area very well, especially with the shifting of one of the Issaquah units to a new location on Eastlake-Sam Road eventually, but our resources will be dynamic. Currently, your Station 81 and Issaquah Station 73 in the contract are what we call move-up stations. They are generally moved throughout the day anyway because of responsibilities to cover other areas. So it's just simply shifting that.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. And the last piece I'd like to cover about the budget as far as an overview is this year was our first funding formula refresh. This is a unique piece of our contract, the ILA. When the ILA was created or renewed back in January 1st of 2015, there was an agreed-upon funding formula, and it was a change that was made by the partners to go to 85% AV based on the 2013 year and 15% NORCOM call volume. It was stated in that ILA that the funding formula would be refreshed in 2018 and then again in 2022. All right. And our contract was set to, originally was just a seven-year contract. We since, in 17, we extended the contract to 2026 and implemented automatic 10-year renewals, and we decided that effective 2022, we would renew these numbers and update them every two years. As you can see, we currently are updating about every four years for these first two cycles, and it creates some swings. And since we've done that, what occurred was we had, if you look across this green bar, as proposed back in July 5th, again, these numbers have changed, but we're trying to stick with the same exhibit to be consistent in our conversations. What occurred was that North Bend and Issaquah, because of the funding formula refresh and no other reason, their percentages are quite higher than the 3.96 that this time that was being proposed increased for 2019. What was asked by both of these entities when this was presented, is there anything that we can do to reduce the hit in this given year for this? And staff was asked to go back by the FAC and look at some other, some several examples and bring back our thoughts. This was the only viable option that we could come up with, and within this, there's three options. And the option we're calling is a smoothing option, and what this would do now and in the future, based on a policy change that we would make within our budget, and again, this will be finalized on October 11th or considered on October 11th, so it has not been decided at this point. But what's being recommended by the FAC to the board is that the 1 and 1/2% or Option 3B on the screen is the smoothing option that be implemented. What this does is it caps any individual partner's increase to 1 and 1/2% above whatever the overall EFOR increase is. In this case, it's 3.96%. You add 1.5% to that, which gets you to 5.46%, would be the cap that any partner would pay, and then the surplus would be distributed between those partners that are not above that threshold. What this does is it softens the blow or smooths the blow to Issaquah and North Bend and phases it in over two years. The net to Sammish in this particular instance is a difference of $3,758. If you total Years 1 and 2, what your contributions would be if there was no smoothing option, compared to what your cost would be for Option 3B in Years 1 and 2, so 19 and 20, there is a $3,758 difference between the two. It simply shifts, you're going to pay a little bit more than you otherwise would have. It's still a decrease over what your payments would have been under the old formula. It's still a decrease. It just simply spreads it out over two years. This also, in the way that it's crafted in the policy, when 2022 hits, because we're waiting four years to smooth again contractually, somebody or a few entities are going to have a disparate change like this. When you're not smoothing every two years, it's going to be more drastic changes, and for a community the size of North Bend, you know, going to, I believe it was a 7.8% increase somewhere in that range, is a big number, and that's not the type of number that you historically get from EFOR. So this is, the FAC has recommended this to the EFOR board for consideration. It will be at the October 11th as a separate item from the budget, but it is one of the items that will be proposed or considered at the EFOR board meeting. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have on the presentation or on the smoothing.
Thanks for that, Chief Clark. That was a good report out. I'm a finance guy, and the only thing that strikes me about the smoothing, the concept is good, but I wonder if it takes up to sometimes just two, three, four years to pay back the cap for some of the very high rate. How do we bookkeep this going forward? It seems simple when we launch it, but I'm looking down the road five years, 10 years. How do we keep managing the deficits and moving it around? What's the thought on that?
It's a very fair question, Councilmember Ross, and I think as we're smoothing every four years, it will be very easy to track, because I think where your concern comes into play, when we're doing, when we're smoothing every two years, and if we had a smooth compounding on another smooth, I think is what you're referring to, I do not believe that once we get past 2022, that this will be a significant issue, because as AV and call volume goes up, if we are, if we're, as we called it here, I don't remember, what did I call it? I had to go back. Sorry, I went the wrong way. I'm drawing a blank on, oh, the refresh, the data and the AV refresh. If we smooth every two years, it will actually, the numbers won't be as drastic increase. The reason that there's a drastic increase this year is it, we're using 2013 AV data. The AV in this region changes dramatically over, that's nearly a five-year change, and so does call volume. The closer, in fact, the easiest thing to do would be to refresh every year, then we wouldn't have the concern that you're bringing up. But I think the sensitivity from the partner's standpoint at that point was, well, then we could have more drastic changes year to year, and we'd rather do this, line it up with our two-year budget process and smooth that way. So I don't think it'll be an issue, but if it does become a bookkeeping issue, then that's something, and it'll be after 2022 when I would be, probably 2024, I'd have to come back to all of you and ask for a change in the policy. We'll adhere to the policy that's there, but I would agree with you, it could become problematic.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Valderrama.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for that presentation, just as a historical reminder that this policy that came into place, came into place at the bequest, the strong request of the city of Sammish to have this modeling. At that time, the city of North Bend, who allowed this to go forth, took a significant hit, and as I said at that time, no good deed goes unpunished. So they took a hit at that point in time and asked everybody to remember that they were doing this for the good of the partnership. The smoothing exercise that is now going on will come back, and while Issaquah and North Bend are hit now, Sammish is most likely going to be getting hit very shortly because our fire rates are starting to go up. They've been unnaturally low over the last number of years, and so it's very likely that we may be on the other side of the coin, and we'll also want our partners to help facilitate those peaks that arise until the 2022 numbers can come in and we can go into it. So just a historical reminder of that.
Councilmember Hornish.
Yes, Chief, thanks. Can you go to the last slide? I want to just kind of make sure I understand. You were talking about a $3,700 difference over two years for Sammish, but I'm struggling with understanding that with Option 1, Sammish, it has 284,000, and then Option 3B is 344. That's a 60,000 difference? How can that be 60, and our incremental cost for two years is only 3,700? Am I comparing apples to oranges?
Just a second. We're working on the PowerPoint here. Councilmember Hornish.
All right.
All right. So, so fair question. I will say in the slides that you have right now, you do not, you're missing one piece of the funding, and I'll just go, I refer to my notes right now, and I'll be happy to provide this for all the council. The FAC members do have this. The original numbers that these are based on, your 2019 contribution, maybe I don't have that here. Well, your 2019 contribution under the proposal is a 284,392, and then again on the slide for 2020 would be the 103,298. That totals $443,799. All right. In the original formula, again, which is not in this PowerPoint, the original formula, the total of those two numbers for 19 and 20 for the city of Sammish being proposed was 447,557. That's the difference of 3,758. And the reason that that difference is there, you will make that up in 2021, but it's because North Bend isn't quite completely through the smoothing process with the two-year. They're just shy of hitting that.
Okay. I understand the smoothing, and I'm all on board for that. I'm just not quite following the numbers, but I can take that offline with one of our reps. That's fine.
And I will happily, I'll happily send you a summary. I'll send a summary to this to the entire council of that math right there.
All right. Thanks.
Okay. I don't see any more questions. Chief Clark, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate your time here. Okay. Next, we have the 2019 Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you have Pat McLaughlin and Darian Waller here with Solid Waste, and I think Mr. McLaughlin is going to make the presentation to you.
Good evening, and thank you very much, Mayor, council members, and city manager. Again, my name is Pat McLaughlin. It's my pleasure to serve as King County Solid Waste Director, and I know in your package before you, you have a presentation that outlines a summary of key policy issues associated with our comprehensive plan, and I know that your time is tight this evening. I think all these folks are here to learn about the Comprehensive Solid Waste Plan, and I do find garbage and recycling pretty fascinating myself. You know, the truth is, and if I could have some assistance here, I don't know how to advance the slide. If you could just go to the next slide would be good. In this comprehensive plan, there are really three core areas that are being addressed, and I would present to you that the most significant policy area that we need guidance on is in the area of our disposal. But there's also some important decision-making around transfer services and recycling policies as well. Our plan has not been updated since 2001, and we are facing some critical decisions and some time-sensitive decisions. If you could just go to the next slide would be good. In this comprehensive plan, there are really three core areas that are being addressed. And I would present to you that the most significant policy area that we need guidance on is in the area of our disposal. But there's also some important decision-making around transfer services and recycling policies as well. Our plan has not been updated since 2001, and we are facing some critical decisions and some time-sensitive decisions. And we have been working effectively with our advisory committees comprised of both our city partners and our regional solid waste partners to update this plan over the last two years. And I'm happy to say that we've got a really solid plan now before our council, and soon it will be before you as a city to consider its adoption. Knowing that you have the plan in front of you, I would be happy to dialogue and interact with you on any of the particular policies. But I'd suggest, again, around disposal, the reason that this is such a time-sensitive issue is that our longstanding local landfill, Cedar Hills, which is located in Maple Valley, will reach its capacity in less than 10 years. And so we have to make a decision today as to how we are going to best manage that waste going forward. And we have choices. We could continue and develop what we believe would be one last cell at Cedar Hills, keep our garbage local. We could put it on a rail and export it to an out-of-county landfill. And we could also site and build a waste-to-energy facility and treat the materials through incineration. All three are viable options. They all have varied costs and environmental impacts and different risks associated with them. And I'd be happy to, if you'd like, to just kind of go into dialogue mode with the council to answer questions and provide clarification, either on disposal, recycling, or the transfer systems.
Does anyone have questions? I guess I do, just because, Pat, I know you were at the PIC meeting last week where we discussed the Comprehensive Waste Plan as well. And it was a council member from Issaquah that brought up the discrepancy in the science or the math behind the waste-to-energy as far as greenhouse gases go. Do you want to kind of, because you didn't have an opportunity during PIC to respond to that, so I wouldn't mind if you would kind of go into that.
Thank you. Yeah, and it was a great question. So if we could advance the slide, there's a table in about three slides from here that gives a comparative analysis, this one here. And it shows both the cost, environmental, and even recycling and risks as they compare through the three options. And you'll notice that in the environmental sectors, which is really looking at greenhouse gas emissions, it was noted that there's a tremendous, and we'll just zero in on waste-to-energy, there's a tremendous difference between the life-cycle greenhouse gas, what's called the WARM model, which is estimating somewhere between 12,000 and 80,000 metric ton equivalents of CO2 being released. And then this annual greenhouse gas emission, which is saying 1.2 million tons a year. And it was raised as a concern as to how could these models be so different? And what's driving that? And in fact, is this really an error? So I appreciate you raising that and giving me an opportunity to provide some clarity for this body. These are models that are developed by our regulator, the EPA, but they're used for different purposes. So the first one, the WARM model, is a life-cycle model. It's actually designed for this very purpose that we're talking about today. When you have disposal options, such as landfilling, or exporting, or waste-to-energy, the WARM model is used for comparative purposes, but it's only meant to be compared against itself and not against this other tool, which I'll talk about here in a moment, which is called the EGGRT, which is really a reporting tool, right? So the life-cycle tool takes into account not just the local activities of incineration or landfilling, but the implications of that activity downstream and beyond, everything from mining through disposal, right? So it's a very complete life-cycle analysis. So for instance, at Cedar Hills, we don't just bury the waste. We actually recover the landfill gas as that waste decomposes. And so we have an advanced, I'll just say, plumbing system in place throughout all levels of the landfill so that we can capture that greenhouse gas. And then through a public-private partnership, right there on site, the impurities are removed, and we create clean natural gas, and it goes right back into the Puget Sound Energy Pipeline, enough energy to heat over 19,000 homes a year. Well, that's clean energy, and it's actually preventing the use of fossil fuels, right? And so that's where you start taking into account the life-cycle impacts of such an activity. And the same is true with waste-to-energy. This other measure, the EGGRT, is a more specific measure about just the activities onsite at a specific location for a specific period of time. And it doesn't take into account really the off-site or ongoing benefits or costs associated with those activities. So we actually, at Cedar Hills, have to, on an annual basis, submit reports through this annual greenhouse gas emission program so that we are accountable to what's happening there at Cedar Hills. But it's not an appropriate use of these tools to compare them to each other because they really are measuring different things in a different scope of the sciences, if you will. The other thing I'll point out is that all of the data with respect to waste-to-energy did not come from us. Now, when it comes to landfilling, I would argue that nobody knows landfilling in this region better than King County. We've been doing it for over 50 years, and we would invite you, if you haven't had the opportunity, to tour a modern, state-of-the-art landfill and wildlife preserve right here in our own King County. We'd love to share that. It's award-winning, and we'd love to share it with you and anyone else in this room by that means. However, I can't say the same when it comes to waste-to-energy. We don't have that same level of expertise or experience. So we retained the best consultants in the U.S. who've worked on the most recent and successful waste-to-energy projects, and tasked them with identifying the best-fit technology. Another question I heard at the PIC, Mayor, was, you know, what is the best technology for King County to consider? And that's the very question we asked as well, that if we were going to use a waste-to-energy solution, what would be the right one? Because there's many to choose from. So we benefited, we spent, you know, quarter million dollars in funding this study to analyze what the best-fit technology was. It's a mass burn solution. And we asked the consultants to identify what the cost and the environmental impacts would be. So all the data that we're sharing here in the right column are the data that came from that study from those third-party experts. They're not the county's numbers. So I think that's also just important to know from a context of when we're comparing this data, both how it's used and where the data came from.
Got a couple more questions up here for you. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so if I look at this chart, and I know that the EPA's WARM model is not meant to compare across methods, if you will, so we can't, but you show in the first two columns as a negative number. Is that meant to imply that you're going to decrease the emissions by that amount?
Yes, in both of the landfilling examples, there's actually removals. So as a result of the advanced landfill gas collection that takes place, its conversion, and the offsets of fossil fuels, over the life-cycle of that activity, it actually has a net removal or favorable impact to greenhouse gas emissions.
Okay, and then if I look at the annual greenhouse gas emissions, the EGGRT methodology, which is meant to be able to compare across, I still see columns one and two far better than three, and they're also the lowest cost. And it looks like while there are risks, I guess what I'm not understanding is why wouldn't we take the lowest-cost, lowest environmental impact option, especially when it's lower by quite a significant amount? Am I missing something obvious?
No. And in fact, and in fact, I appreciate you asking that question. The executive has suggested that very action, that expanding Cedar Hills is the best next option for the region. We have less than 10 years to not just select but implement the disposal method to ensure that we have no gap in service. And by expanding Cedar Hills, as you point out, it is the lowest-cost choice. It also has the most favorable environmental impact. It keeps our jobs local. It allows us to continue to manage our waste locally, and some of the options may not allow us to do that. So it's not without its challenges, but we do think it's the best choice for the region for now.
I do have one follow-on question. My understanding, though, is that if we further develop Cedar Hills, there's a finite amount of development we can do, and this takes us to, what, 2040, 2045? Can't remember.
You are right. There's a finite amount of space available at Cedar Hills. This is likely the last bite of the apple. We have to move facilities in order to accommodate space for the waste. I think it's the right thing to do. But it will bring us, there's a lot of variables that will come into play, but yes, you know, through the mid-2030s to as long as 2050, depending on how well we continue to recycle, how we design the landfill cells itself. So it builds us a longer runway, but we must not forget that it has a finite service level, and we need to continue the selection and determination process of, well, then what?
That was going to be my next question, is the then what? And is there planning going on then beyond 2040? Or, you know, and I realize that the landfill's date keeps getting kicked out now based on behavior of, you know, recycling, which is great. But is there planning going on then? If Cedar Hills closes down, then what?
Yeah, another great question. So this comprehensive plan is intended and really supposed to be updated every six years, or at least reviewed every six years. So our need is to get this plan implemented because we need to get busy addressing both the disposal, the transfer, and the recycling policies for this region's challenges. But, and that'll take some time to implement these policies, but we won't have much time before we have to review and perhaps update this plan yet again. And I would expect that the next update would reflect more details around what's next.
Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, thank you. Was there some serious conversation or dialogue on a hybrid of Cedar Hills and exporting, effectively prolonging the life of Cedar Hills?
Yes, that's another, it was another intriguing option that, you know, if we did export the waste, wouldn't that allow the landfill to last a little bit longer? And it absolutely would. But there's a cost associated with that because you're really running two systems. And it also doesn't resolve the capacity concerns that we have with rail. There's ample capacity at the out-of-county landfills. There's likely ample capacity for the rail yards, but the rails themselves between here and there have points of congestion and they're exceeding capacity. And the forecasts are suggesting that some of those capacity points will get more challenging. We anticipate that ultimately that will get resolved either through the addition of more rail lines or through some pricing mechanisms, but the costs of those capacity corrections aren't reflected here. And so to run both systems would be cost prohibitive.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, do you have an ask from us? Is there any action that you need from us other than just understanding kind of what you're presenting here?
Thank you, I do. You know, this is a really important part of the process that we've entered. We've begun the first part of the adoption process, which is the county council reviewing and deliberating on this very plan. And that includes an action by the Regional Policy Committee. And they have begun deliberations themselves. The Committee of the Whole for our council will pick this issue up on October 1st. And I anticipate one of the first questions that I'll be asked is what do the cities think? Now, we have received letters of endorsement and support for this policy direction from both of our advisory committees, and we have begun to receive them from individual cities. And my ask would be that you consider writing a similar letter to express your points of view on this plan. I would hope that it would be a point of view of support, but even if it's not, I think it's important that our council can hear directly from you as a regional partner relative to the policies that are presented in this plan. This is an important point of influence that you have. It doesn't represent your formal action because once our county goes through their deliberative process, you will have what we anticipate in early 2019, an opportunity to take your own formal action. But I would ask your fine city to consider writing a letter, I'll say of support, but writing a letter of comment either way to inform our council your views of this policy and the plan.
I don't see any more questions up here.
Well, thank you very much. Should any additional questions come up, we're happy to work with your staff. You have great representation and ambassadors for your city in our advisory committees. I'm happy to return for any of your study sessions, or certainly when it does come time for city adoption, if it would be helpful for me to return and answer questions and provide additional information, please do call.
Great. Pat, thank you very much. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have our first of the public hearings. This would be on the ordinance amending the glossary and transportation element of the City of Sammamish Comprehensive Plan. Mr. City Manager.
Yes. Madam Mayor, members of the council, with your permission, I'd like to bundle my introduction and introduce items 16, 17, and 18 collectively because it's basically the same actions that you're going to be looking at here. You have three public hearings, and I suggest you take each of those up individually after this introduction. The first is, as the mayor indicates, it's an ordinance amending the glossary and transportation element of the city's comprehensive plan and providing severability and establishing an effective date. The second ordinance that you'll be having a public hearing on is amending Title 14 of the City's Sammamish Municipal Code relating to transportation concurrency and level of service. And the third ordinance is amending Titles 20, 21A, 21B, and 27A of the municipal code pertaining to transportation concurrency and level of service standards. On September 11th, the council passed a motion directing the staff to prepare the necessary documents detailing an intersection LOS methodology and including a goal to develop volume-to-capacity performance standard for the key road segments. These ordinances, as amended, provide the methodology and develop the volume-to-capacity standard you're talking about. None of these ordinance this evening are emergency ordinances, so therefore they will go into effect five days after publication. We'll come back to that when we start talking about the next ordinance or the next action in regards to the moratorium. I'm going to call on Mr. Linashevsky. I think he might have some points he wishes to highlight in regards to these amendments, and then he can answer any question that you might have, so.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, and citizens. Steve Linashevsky, Public Works Director. So before you in the packet is quite a large bit of documentation that we have been working over the past 18 months on. We did receive a few questions today that I would be more than happy to entertain in tabular format after the hearing that we wanted to have some discussion on. At this point, though, to introduce the item, I don't have anything else to offer.
Great. So do we, okay, well, I'm going to go, I'm going to open up the public hearing.
On item 16.
Yes, this is just on item number 16. So this is amending the glossary and transportation element of the City of Sammamish Comprehensive Plan. So there isn't anyone signed up, but would anyone like to address the council for the public hearing on this? Okay, seeing none, then I am going to turn it over to council for discussion. So I don't have any lights on, so I guess I'll start. I had sent Steve just a few questions. I had a few additions that I would like council to consider, and I'm going to reference them, I think, by the page number. Oh, great, thank you. Actually got him.
Mayor.
I may have written the wrong page number.
I think you got it right. So those pages are referenced to what is in the manual on PDF, not necessarily.
Well, I have one that's on page eight. Maybe I may not have gotten that comment into you. So page eight of 207 on your iPad, there is a list of terms, which includes level of service, transportation level of service. And my question there was, do we need to add in a definition for the oversea in the I would like to see one there. I should say that.
So this was commensurate with... So this was commensurate with, very similar to your, you know, first row item there, add a V to C definition that was in page 17 of the document. So what I did provide on the right is a couple of definitions for council's review and, if so, choosing insertion. They're fairly general definitions of volume to capacity. I would just read them aloud. So one is out of the HCM, 2000 version, the ratio of flow rate to capacity for a transportation facility, fairly short and sweet. Another one was a bit of a hybrid from a couple of resources, the rate of comparison of roadway demand, vehicle volumes with roadway supply carrying capacity. Thought I'd just provide a couple of options.
I very much appreciate that. I think I'm, you know, number two seems to be a better definition, but I think first is establishing whether or not council wants to add that definition here. So I would like to see it added in here as a definition to define. I think it's important, if it's going to be referenced in other places in the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, that we give a very simple definition for those reading this and wondering what it is. Yep, so I'd like to move that we add in definition number two, the rate of comparison of roadway demand, parentheses, vehicle volumes, and parentheses, with roadway supply, parentheses, carrying capacity, and parentheses.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Hornish.
No, I'm sorry. I pushed my button before.
Okay. Councilmember Valdrama.
Yeah, I'd like for staff to know if there's a difference from your perspective on those two definitions.
No, in general, they're vague enough to convey the message that we're getting into a volume over a capacity. So amount of cars here and figuring out what the capacity of our system will be.
Okay, I don't see any more discussion. All those in favor of adding definition number two, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of seven zero, we'll add in that definition. So I think the next question I had was, make sure it's actually page 17 here.
It's the green box with a couple other definitions. You had requested that. I would recommend the same.
And I would, I think it makes sense to use the exact same definition down here. We highlighted in this green box some definitions, and I just, I think it would behoove us to add in what a V oversee is, or vehicle to capacity ratio here. So I would move that we add in the exact same definition that we just did into the glossary, into this green box.
So moved.
Is that a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of seven zero, we'll add the definition in the green box as well. And then I think the next one's page 33. Sorry, I got to scroll there. So this is actually related to the previous discussion. This is actually an older change that I just, the language here seemed awkward to me and clunky. It made it sound like our primary means of access, primary being first, would be state route 520, 202, and I-90. None of those actually touch our jurisdiction, so I actually preference the definition that was crossed out. So I'd prefer to keep the, the language that is crossed out. So I would move that we not accept this change and add back in the crossed out language.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of putting back in the crossed out, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Name.
Okay, by a vote of six one, it passes. We'll alter that definition back to what it originally was. And then, sorry, Steve, what was the last page?
I think it's more.
There we go.
Page 58.
58. So this just seemed awkwardly worded, in my opinion. The word, I think I took kind of issue with the word predefined. I just thought it would be good to further define that. And I don't know if that's saying something like, at the 43 intersections during volume based defined AM and PM peak hours. And you could add in something like by the system because it's, I think we use the system peak rather than talking specifically about an intersection's peak. So I would move that we alter the language here instead of using predefined, say, at the 43 intersections during volume based defined AM and peak system hours, or peak hours by the system. So it's under AM, PM, peak hour intersection level of service, that paragraph, and it's the very last sentence in the first paragraph.
Can you read her amendment again, Mayor?
Yeah, let me click on it again. So it would say, and I can back up to read the whole sentence, level of service analysis was performed at the 43 intersections during volume based defined AM and PM. And I don't know if we should say system peak hours. Would that be accurate, Steve?
So, yeah.
System peak being all of the 43 intersections.
For everybody here. Sorry about that. Yeah, I would recommend a little, I think we recommended not changing that, but if the term predefined wasn't necessarily the pleasure of the council, I would say at the 43 intersections during the city's defined AM and peak hours.
Okay.
That's a little more simple, and we do define our own peak hours.
Yep.
If I can skip to, I think we're on 58.
Do you have that language back on the?
I actually had something different, but sitting here, I would recommend that we just, again, remove predefined and just, I can type it up for Lita in a second here, but at the 43 intersections during the predefined AM and PM peak hours. I'm sorry, the city's defined AM and PM peak hours.
Okay.
Change predefined to the city's defined.
System peak, because I think system is probably.
We define peak hour in the glossary.
Okay. Is that clear as mud? Is what the language is?
No, no, hold on. So are we now, first of all, has a motion been made on this?
Yes, I've made a motion.
So are we looking at the language as modified with staff's recommendation?
Um, yes, with Steve's recommendation that he just said.
Yes.
Not what's written here, but what he just said.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure.
Okay. I don't know that it's been seconded, though.
Second.
Okay, now it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, by a vote of seven zero, we'll alter that. The last thing I had was, there doesn't appear to be any reference to the V oversee in the background element, and I wondered if there shouldn't be something there. I think that was my last comment on there.
Yes, so briefly to address that, I was able to speak with legal counsel. Sorry about this. Not my computer here. It's a little different than my desk. So what was provided in the policy section of the proposed document, including the recent changes, this will not stay centered, along with future interim regulations should accommodate the council's policy direction. So we don't believe any change is necessary because it's in the policy section.
Okay. Very good. Does anyone else have any, Councilmember Stewart?
Oh, I was going to move that we adopt this ordinance.
Okay.
I've got a few questions.
I have a motion.
Okay, yeah, she's got her button pushed, so go ahead.
I made the motion that we adopt this ordinance as amended.
Second, third.
They're moved and seconded. Is there a discussion?
I've got discussions, but I still got questions.
Okay.
That, that I don't think changes anything as there, but I wanted to better understand a couple of things. And maybe it's been addressed. I've got three questions. The, where was it before we added all this V oversee language, that it would have been operative that we need to come up with a V oversee to have it part of our concurrency? Can somebody, legal staff, help me kind of where it was intended to be and be part of the comp plan?
Councilmember Hornish, I'm sorry, I don't think we totally understand the question. Could you rephrase?
Where, where, where in the comp plan is the operative language that adds a V oversee to be determined to our concurrency requirement?
This is, this is David, Tom. Policy T1.3, I believe. It's hard for me to read the red lines, but I think that is the one that, well, there's probably, I think there's a couple, but that one specifically refers to segment performance based on roadway volume to capacity ratios. So it incorporates some flexibility for the city to then determine what that V oversee looks like after further input from staff and your consultants.
Can anybody help me what PDF page that is?
Tom, take, take a look at 306 out of 612, if that.
I only got 207. Well, actually, I think you've answered my question. Let's keep moving. The second question I had is page 95 on the PDF. It talks, and I'm going to try to get there myself again. There was a reference and a change, actually, to the mixed-use subarea plan for, it went from 1760 to 2000 dwelling units in 200 and 400. I'm not sure what the change is, but now it's 600. The question I have is, the 2000 is in our, in our code and in our town center plan, I know that, but I always get confused that the 400 versus 600. I think the 400 is in the plan, but the 600 is in the code. Can somebody clarify me as to where the 600 came from?
Do we need Jeff to answer that one?
So just rereading this for a second, Tom, so.
I think they're looking, Tom.
Okay, but I heard that, that we removed the office space and it's not a commercial because commercial is, includes office, that's fair. But I still think we had, there's some disparity in the plan and in our code between the 400 and 600, if I'm not mistaken. Unfortunately, I didn't have time to go back and look. And I'd asked this question a year or so ago, and I think Jeff did answer it. One's in the code, one's in the plan, but I forgot which one's which.
I think Jeff, are you looking, he's looking it up, Tom.
Okay. Well, let me ask my other question, is the process question, if I could. Mr. City Manager talked about this becoming in effective five days by ordinance. I'm just a little bit unclear about the adoption of a comp plan change by ordinance. I thought this has to go back through the Department of Commerce. I guess my first sub-question is, is that correct? This has to still get approved at the state through the Department of Commerce, is that correct?
Not this version. This was already processed.
Well, this version was already processed with the changes.
Yeah, Tom, you're correct. Normally, a comp plan amendment would go through Department of Commerce review, but this one has already gone through and been signed off.
Oh, I didn't know that. That answers my question. Thank you. Okay.
Is that all of them?
And I think what Jeff will look up is this brought to consistency between the code and the comp plan on the 400 to 600, but.
I would just suggest that we make it conforming with the code is the only change I would suggest. I know we have a motion on the floor.
Jeff still looks like he's looking. Yep, he's nodding his head. He's looking to make sure. I think it would be wise to make sure that they're both congruent.
Make sure it's the mix of retail.
We don't need an amendment to, but I'm assuming that's why it's redlined here.
Well, let me follow up a little bit, question with that answer I just got. If this has already been through Commerce and we made changes, what do we have to do? Just send it back and it's immaterial, the changes for the Department of Commerce, I presume, right?
I would say, Tom, these are immaterial and changes at the council's discretion. They don't change the overwhelming type of, you know, plan that you have, so.
I would.
Legal can confer with that if he'd like, but it's fairly de minimis in nature relative to what they expect.
Yeah, I think this is very consistent with what, with what's already been presented. Minor detail adjustments like this, I don't think would trigger any concerns from DOC.
But, but what's our official plan, as amended or what was filed with the DOC?
Tom, can you repeat that? Sorry, Steve, it looks like he's, couldn't quite hear you.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out, since we amended it today, but the Department of Commerce already signed off on it, what is our official comp plan? As we amended it tonight or what was filed with the Department of Commerce?
If you, if you adopt all these amendments tonight, because right now you haven't adopted, you've adopted some proposed changes, but you haven't actually passed them yet.
Right, right.
If they are adopted, then that final amended plan will be sent to Department of Commerce. But they've.
It will, okay.
I don't believe it will trigger re-review. It will just be, this is the final adopted version.
Fair enough. And it gets filed with the state then. That's what I wanted to confirm. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Any answer on the 600?
Yep, Jeff's got the mic.
Good evening, council. To answer Councilmember Hornish's question, Sammish Municipal Code 21B, 25030 identifies the 600,000 square foot as the maximum cap.
Done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Is there any more discussion? So seeing none, so we would be passing this with the amendments made earlier.
Correct.
This evening. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of seven zero, and that passes. And actually, I don't think I formally closed the public hearing, so I want to be sure I do that. Okay. So next, we are going to move to item 17, which is repealing Title 14 and amending Title 14A of the City of Sammish Municipal Code relating to transportation concurrency and level of service. Mr. City Manager, I think you've already touched on this. Steve, do you have any? Nope.
Changes to this item and then the forthcoming next item 18 are relative to the code that the city has adopted to implement the policy you just passed for your transportation element update and definitions.
Okay. Council, have any questions? Someone want to, yes. Oh, that's right. Excuse me. Is there a sign up sheet for that? Nope. Okay, so we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to address the council on Title 14 and 14A? Nope, seeing none. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
Steve, I hate to do this to you, but there's a, on page seven here, it talks about the city's traffic AM peak hour and PM peak hour, and I, and it defines them. And I thought that we had said that we were not going to, oh, no, wait, this is in the code, sorry. So that's, my bad. We weren't going to define it in the comp plan. We're just defining in the code. Never mind. It's all good. Beautiful. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Valdrama.
Just a clarification. The reason we're doing this 14A is because 14A is more applicable to the city, is that correct? And then 14, that sometimes gets misconstrued and.
Yes, 14 at some point in time was superseded by 14A, and there was an interesting definition we found, or description along the way, that it would be needed until no longer necessary. So we really formally never killed it, even though we operated under 14A and whole, so. But yes, that's what you just passed. The next hearing you have is for 20.
Thank you.
Yes, 20, 21A, 21B, and 27A. So.
Thanks.
But yes, good question on 14.
Okay, so if there aren't any more questions, motion would.
I move that we adopt this ordinance as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of seven zero, those changes will occur. Okay, next we will move on to our next public hearing. This is amending Titles 20, 21A, 21B, and 21, and 27A of the Sammish Municipal Code. This is pertaining to transportation concurrency and level of service standards. So I will open, Steve, do you have anything on this? Nope. Okay, then we are going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Doesn't look like we have anyone signed up. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this? Nope, seeing none. We'll close the public hearing and open it up to council for questions. Or a motion. Councilmember Stewart.
I move that we adopt the ordinance as written.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 7-0, that passes.
Thank you for the hearings, council, and for the adoption of quite a lengthy amount of work, so.
Okay.
Thank you to you all. Good job.
Thank you. So next, we will have an executive session. David, I apologize, I don't have any RCW to recite down here.
Pursuant to litigation, RCW...
110, 1I.
I believe you're right. 32.110.1I, I believe.
Litigation...
Yes, okay, so I would imagine probably 30 minutes.
I'm here, yep.
Great. All right, well, we'll get started again here. So, the next item we have is the ordinance and public hearing on the adoption of a renewal of a six-month moratorium on the acceptance of certain applications for land use, development, and building permits or approval within the City of Sammish. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, after this public hearing and you receiving testimony, council then has a couple of options on deciding which action you wish to take in regards to the moratorium. You could adopt the ordinance this evening, which would extend the moratorium. In so doing, you would adopt the recitals that are within the ordinance and accept those as findings of fact in support of the moratorium. If council is a mind to remove the moratorium, the easiest course of action is to let the moratorium expire, which would take place on October the 3rd. In doing so, with the amendments that you made to the ordinances previously, those will go in effect five days after they are published. They would go in effect prior to October the 2nd, so any development taking place after that would be meeting the contents of those new ordinances. So you've got those two options. Of course, again, you could take this issue up again at your October 3rd meeting, and if you chose that time to take action, you would be looking at doing so as an emergency, and that's a little bit heavier lift than what you would do if you passed it this evening. So those are your options, but I'm sure you're going to get a lot of testimony on this, and I'm sure that will have an effect on the decision that you make here this evening. So, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it back to you for the public hearing.
Great. Jeff, did you have anything to open up with, or you want me to just get straight to?
No, you can go straight to it. It was well put.
Okay, do we have, I'm sure we have a sign-in sheet for that. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. First on the list, I have Deb Sogi, followed by Randy Bannaker and Duncan Green. Then you guys can probably just kind of queue up on the side here.
There. Good evening, Council. Money Magazine and Realtor.com just named Sammish as the ninth best places to live in the nation. We've heard these things before, but now it is number one in the state, right here in Sammish. Is it any wonder that we all came here? 30 years ago, 7 years ago, 2 years ago, who knows when, but when we came here, did we say, "Close the gates"? No. Did we say, "No more development"? No, we wanted products and services that would help us to live easily and to not have to drive down the hill. However, we can plan to be a responsible and regional partner and manage smart growth, which you're attempting to do right now. The town center plan was developed for smarter growth. I spoke to Sound Transit last Friday. They're very interested in talking to the council about planning their transit and maybe park-and-ride in the town center. They're very anxious to move on, and they're questioning me about the moratorium and how many more months it's going to be, and how their budget speaks to a three-year term, and do they, by the time ground breaks, what will they have? Will they have a possibility again? We don't want spot development constructions sprawl throughout the city. I don't think any of us want that. That doesn't control traffic. We want a well-planned town center with density, mixed-use transit, and a core location to be the solution. Some damage has been done by turning away interested businesses and by holding the current property owner who holds a monopoly in Sammish, having him pushing out smaller businesses as he can raise the rates on leasing because he really doesn't have any competition. This hurts the plateau. Tax dollars are leaking off the plateau, preventing a thriving economy. Residents are frustrated and tired of leaving the plateau for products and services that they would like to have here. This is going on for decades. One thing I keep thinking is, how do other cities change things, make decisions about currency and other things, comp plan, when they don't have a moratorium going? Why can't we do that? And I've seen us going kind of in circles, and I know it's a learning curve, but can't we move on without a moratorium and make decisions on things we need to make decisions on, like comp plan, et cetera, and TMP? Can't we move on and still make decisions? Actually, I'm thinking without a moratorium that these changes and improvements could happen quicker without the moratorium, because you'll be, you'll know you have to move on to other business, you'll know you want to get things done now. And so I think it could be a real advantage not having a moratorium. So I ask you to let the moratorium die a natural death, October 3rd. Please don't set another moratorium and frustrate us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Randy Bannaker, Duncan Green, Dave Bow, and John Galvin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Randy Bannaker. I'm here on behalf of the Seattle King County Realtors. I'm here to encourage that you allow the moratorium to expire. I have been reviewing your housing element, which will be the subject of another public hearing, and it's a really great piece of work. It talks about, with the public engagement, the Planning Commission's work, is all about looking at ways to increase the range of housing options in the City of Sammish. And what's frustrating, or what I'm concerned about, is that good language, that thoughtful work that was done by the Planning Commission, is effectively neutralized by an extension, a six-month extension of the moratorium, because it prevents the policies that your housing element discusses from being moved from a planning concept into implementation. I think it's also, an extension of the moratorium is also contrary to the spirit and intent of the Growth Management Act, which calls upon the city to anticipate and plan for growth. It's difficult to reconcile with the stated goals. It's difficult to reconcile moratorium with the stated goals of your housing element, because we want to move, again, move those strong ideas into implementation. The need has never been greater in our region for additional housing supply, and a moratorium obviously prevents that from coming into place. So again, we urge that you allow the moratorium to expire. Thank you.
Thank you. Duncan Green?
Mayor, council, my name is Dave Bow. Actually, Duncan Green's going to follow me. We're both speaking on the same property. Hello, I'm Dave Bow. My mailing address is 2626 40th Avenue West, Seattle, Washington, 98199. I'm joined by my brother Ken over there. Our sister Sue was unable to attend. I'm speaking in opposition to the proposed moratorium. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and hope my suggestions are taken constructively. I'm available for questions anytime or following my presentation. The Bow family owns 2.37 acres on Pine Lake, which has been in the family since 1952, when we were just small children. After mother's passing in 2015, selling became our only option. Milestone Northwest contracted to buy our land in May of 2017. Their due diligence and permitting timeframe was for one year, then later extended to the end of this year because of the moratorium. The first pre-application process began in June 2017, before the moratorium was enacted, but city staff later determined that the complete pre-application process was not sufficiently complete, because the meeting notes had expired by the time Milestone learned of the extension, excuse me, exemption for pipeline projects where a pre-application meeting had been completed. Milestone has now moved beyond the second round of meetings with the city and neighbors, and they have, are more than a month into their current 120-day submittal window. The effort now will focus on Milestone gaining staff recognition that the pre-application process is in fact complete, thus allowing the city to schedule a short plat application appointment time. Respectfully, we request the city to work with those who play by the rules in compliance with adopted regulations. We applaud the city's effort to improve road standards now considered inadequate, but are having difficulty doing so while being told to, excuse me, road standard now considered inadequate, but are having difficulty doing so while being told to stand by waiting for how long. We recommend the city let the moratorium expire in three weeks. The purpose appears focused on traffic impacts related to the pending town center proposal. If that is true, it seems unnecessary and counterproductive to hold other unrelated proposals hostage in the interim. In general, moratoriums hurt individuals, not the general population. This is due because just a very small percentage of landowners are ever engaged in the land use permitting at any given time as compared to the entire community. The real damage is suffered by individual property owners like the Bow family, who have no other choice and are forced by fate into this arena. Jurisdictions update policies and regulations routinely without ever changing normal review operations. I've got just a couple more things to say.
Yeah, can you just wrap up? That'd be great.
Yeah. I've not read or heard of any favorable revenue projections the city expects from this moratorium. Are increased revenues the real impetus, and do larger impact fees justify or outweigh our potential cost and waiting time? Has this been calculated? If the numbers are that significant, and I assume they must be, what alternatives exist in achieving the same result? Or what does the city lose if the moratorium ends in October? We ask the city to allow this moratorium to expire in three weeks. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. So, do we have Duncan Green speaking now, then?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. My name is Duncan Green, representing Milestone Northwest, the developer of the Pine Lake project you just heard about.
Address, please.
I'm sorry?
Address, please.
Oh, Van Nessfeldman is the name of my law firm. 719 Second Avenue, Suite 1150, Seattle, Washington, 98104. I submitted a written comment letter earlier today. I won't repeat everything we said in our comment letter, I'll just give you the highlights. But I do want to give you a little more background on the application process, so you can understand how this is played out. Milestone submitted an application for its little six-lot, short plat project on Pine Lake, and they got caught up in this moratorium because of what really is nothing more than a technicality. Milestone did complete a pre-application meeting before the moratorium was enacted, and so Milestone actually qualified for the exception that you all created for those kinds of pipeline projects. However, city staff had previously told Milestone that it was not allowed to submit an application, and then when the council amended the moratorium to add this pipeline project exception where pre-application meetings had been completed, Milestone wasn't notified about that change. So my clients didn't know that the city would have accepted its application for a brief period of time. And then, a few months later, when Milestone learned about the exception and approached city staff to, you know, seeking confirmation that our project does fit within that exception, the staff took the position that the pre-application conference notes had expired, because Milestone didn't submit an application by January 22nd. So they said it's too late for Milestone to take advantage of that exception. So in other words, we could have submitted during the short window from November 2017, when you added this exception through January 22nd, but not after that window. The position doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to me, but in any event, now Milestone has completed a second preapplication meeting, but if staff maintains the same position about this exception, and if the moratorium is not lifted, then the second preapplication meeting is going to expire all over again, and Milestone will be left in the same position. And that's really just putting form over function here. We have a completed preapplication meeting process. We didn't submit within an arbitrary timeframe because we weren't notified, but that timeframe has nothing to do with whether the preapplication meeting was completed before the moratorium took effect. So we're asking the council to help us out by either, as others have suggested, allowing the moratorium to expire under its own terms. Alternatively, if the council is not inclined to let the moratorium expire, we're asking that you consider amending the moratorium, so that it really and clearly excludes small projects like this Pine Lake project that will have minimal impacts, and the type of impacts that don't really fall within the purpose of this moratorium. Projects like the Pine Lake, this Pine Lake project should not be subject to moratorium. And in our written comment, we did provide a couple of examples of ways the council could do that, either geographically or by using a trip generation threshold. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next I have John Galvin, Eva Otto, Gina Clark, and Sun Yang.
John Galvin, 19502 Southeast 16th Street, Sammish. You individually have already made a decision, so these public comments are putting your decision in a context in which the public can judge whether that decision was reasonable or unreasonable, whether it served the city's needs or your personal agenda. With that having been said, let me just remind you of a few things. An emergency ordinance, moratorium, assumes that there's an emergency. You have just revised the concurrency. You have changed the level of service, made those revisions, and passed that work on to the TMP. So where's the emergency? You'll have to come up with something new if you wish to extend this. Let me also remind you that in the past, the city has used moratorium, moratoria, as a development policy. And you were taken before the Growth Management Hearing Board in 2005, I believe, and summarily lost big. You were told you cannot use moratoria as a development policy. You would end the moratorium immediately, and very next day, all the development that had been backed up rushed in, and the city had to deal with an avalanche of applications. Bad management all around. Well, if you extend this moratorium, you're inviting the same consequences. You are also inviting legal action, and everything indicates that you'll lose big again. Consequences to the city, you've heard, you know, many, many people point out what would be the consequence of extending this moratorium. And I'm looking around. Where are the people demanding you to keep this moratorium in place? Where are they? I don't see any of them. I don't hear any of my fellow citizens running around saying, "Oh, my God, we need to have this moratorium." So what are you up to if you extend it? Those who vote to extend it will have to see their decision in the context of what has been said here tonight, what has been said here frequently in the last several months. So let it expire, go on with work that needs to be done. If not, well, we'll have to face the consequences together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Eva Otto, Gina Clark, Sun Yang, and Kevin Jones.
Good evening. My name is Eva Otto, and my address is 4031 Evanston Avenue North in Seattle. And I am here to ask you to vote to lift the moratorium or to let it expire. Last week, I spoke to you about three groups of people in this town that have been materially damaged by the... damaged by this last year-long moratorium. I spoke about the landowners multiple times. I'm a broker. I represent many of them, who've had their land devalued by the ongoing policies of having uncertain planning and moratoria in Sammamish. We've heard about the business owners who have been materially damaged, who can't afford to rent here, who are being pushed out, or don't have enough shoppers, don't have enough density to support their stores. And I talked about last week the city of Sammamish being materially damaged by the time and financial resources that have gone into planning for concurrency, only to really come to no conclusion. Maybe there was a conclusion tonight, but it's caused a lot of material damage to the city and key personnel turnover. I read to you also from the Growth Management Board's decision to invalidate the city of Sammamish's moratorium in 2005, and I just want to remind you that what the board said, they said that the moratorium ordinance was clearly erroneous, it was noncompliant with the Growth Management Act. The board concluded that the moratorium ordinance failed to be consistent and implement the comprehensive plan, it failed to comply with CEPA, and it failed to consider and be guided by the goals of the Growth Management Act. And so, it was invalidated. I want to talk about a fourth group of citizens who have lost a lot of opportunity costs due to this moratorium, and that is, the residents of this town have lost out on the economic boom that's been taking place over the last 10 years in every other city close by. Seattle's office market is boomed, Redmond, everyone around us, there's no office space available. Amazon is building, Google is building, they're going to the East Side, Microsoft's made commitments, and yet, Sammamish is missing that boat. We need housing to help house all these great new jobs that are coming to our area, and we need transportation solutions to get there, both which can be addressed under planning, the town center, and the development proposal. So, it makes me sad, honestly, because I think about all the office space that could be here, all the jobs that could be here right now if we had really moved forward to plan the town center. So I ask you to please lift the moratorium.
Thank you. Next we have Gina Clark.
Good evening. My name's Gina Clark. I'm with the Master Builders Association, 335 116th Avenue Northeast in Bellevue. After nearly a year of the moratorium, I'm here to ask you to let the moratorium expire. The housing shortage, rising housing costs, traffic impacts, growth, changes in community character, these are all challenging issues so many of our communities are facing, and Sammamish is certainly no exception. Last October, you enacted the moratorium to try to get a handle on one of these issues. Under the moratorium, you had to meet four legal findings before you could lift it or let it expire. Consider and deliberate transportation concurrency and related traffic impacts. Retain an experienced traffic engineering firm to provide technical assistance. Provide additional time to amend planning documents and development regulations to address concurrency, and work toward completion of a transportation master plan. It hasn't always been easy, it hasn't always been pretty, but you've done all of that. And I want to thank you for your hard work and your dedication, as well as staff's hard work and dedication to get that done. So now that you've met those legal requirements, please, let the moratorium expire. Build a town center and create a place of economic investment so that residents aren't forced to leave the plateau for services. Further congesting two choke points in Isiqua and Redmond that are already in need of desperate improvement. Build a variety of housing types that support families, seniors, and employees, and build that for your constituents who value the excellence that Sammamish stands for through wonderful schools, environment, city engagement, the arts, and so much more. Ending the moratorium means that we no longer have to be a divided community or divided stakeholders. Let us come together so we can help you plan and implement to solve these most challenging issues, and let us do it under your leadership. But we can only do it if you let the moratorium expire. Let's get Sammamish moving again. Thank you again for all of your hard work.
Thank you. Next I have Sung Yang, Kevin Jones, and if there's anyone else that wants to address the council, if you want to, just kind of queue up.
Good evening, Mayor Council members. My name is Sung Yang. My address is 1403 Third Avenue, Seattle. I'm a partner with Pacific Public Affairs and part of the STCA team working on the Town Center Development Project, and I'm providing comments on behalf of STCA this evening. Joining so many other Sammamish residents, businesses, property owners, and developers here tonight, we are asking the city council to end the development moratorium. You will recall that this city was held in violation, as others have spoken before, of the Growth Management Act after a prior similar six-year moratorium. And following that legal ruling, the town center zoning was adopted as a way to move forward and manage growth and traffic. Yet, when STCA acquired the necessary ownership to actually apply for the town center and implement your town center plan, one of your listed 2018 priorities that I see proudly displayed, and the very plan that was passed to address the GMA requirements which rendered your moratorium invalid, the council enacted yet another moratorium that was now extended for a year. It is inconceivable to me that you would consider another six-month extension. Adding to our frustrations and those voiced here tonight, we understand there might be attempts to lift the development moratorium except for the town center. And let me be clear, STCA is opposed to any outcome that would continue the moratorium for the town center project. Any list of exemptions that allow for one kind of development, including subdivisions outside the town center while not allowing for development inside the town center, would fail. Any kind of rational basis test would be totally contrary to the Growth Management Act and would only reinforce the arbitrary nature of Sammamish's actions. In recognition of the special benefits of the town center, previous city councils took specific actions to ensure the town center is available to accommodate the city's growth. These actions included the southeast Fourth Street Expansion Project in an interlocal agreement with King County to make the town center the sole receiving site for the transfer of development rights. Having rightly taken these special actions to promote town center development, on what basis would the city now single out the town center for a continuing moratorium? Now that there is a decision to proceed with a concurrency update, there is no further basis to continue a moratorium in any form. While some council members may wish, even after an exhaustive year's work, to refine the city's concurrency approach to add a volume-to-capacity test, that certainly does not justify, warrant, or necessitate any moratorium in the meantime. Moreover, under state law, the term concurrency means that improvements or strategies are in place at the time of development, or that a financial commitment is in place to complete the improvements or strategies within six years. And just let me finish. Given this long-term time horizon, there is nothing in the record that would support a finding that there is an emergency in Sammamish to justify moratorium. As we believe the city has been advised, concurrency tests cannot be a subterfuge for no growth strategies. It's time to end the moratorium, it's time to move forward, and now Kevin Jones, STCA's transportation consultant, will provide additional remarks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kevin Jones, and again, anyone else that wants to address the council can just kind of queue up along the wall and then come up.
Good evening, Kevin Jones, Transpo Group. My address is 12131 113th Avenue Northeast, Suite 203 in Kirkland. I've appeared several times before you over the course of the last year, and on behalf of STCA, I ask that my previous comments be incorporated into the record for the current moratorium hearing. Along with this technical memo, I plan to submit to the city clerk following my remarks. I just want to take a few minutes this evening to address the concerns of some, that the expanded intersection-only approach to measure transportation concurrency, as represented in the standards scheduled for adoption tonight, may be insufficient, and that additional road segment capacity analysis may be needed. In my view, such concern is not warranted, and here's why. The expanded intersection level service standards, as reflected in what is now described as option four, are not only sufficient for concurrency testing, but their scope is more rigorous and comprehensive than any other city or county in Washington State. Adoption of these standards essentially means that average vehicle delay would be 25 to 55 seconds or less, depending on the intersection and traffic control. These standards target the 15-minute period of greatest traffic demand on weekday mornings and late afternoons, meaning that motorists would not experience more than this amount of delay during these peak periods and non-peak periods alike. These standards would apply to nearly 40 intersections throughout Sammamish, and at the four intersections where such standards are unachievable, even with multiple approach lanes, the threshold for the worst 15-minute period would be set at 80 seconds or less. These standards are unprecedented, whether the concurrency test is supplemented with road segment volume-to-capacity analysis or not. With the scope of an intersection-only approach so thorough in terms of the number of intersections, the time periods, and level service standards, it's more likely than not that an intersection would be forecast to exceed standards well before any nearby roadway segment would otherwise. Therefore, in my judgment, there's very little value in supplementing option four to include such volume-to-capacity analysis, whether it's applied to a few select road segments, certain roadway classifications, or all roadways throughout the city. As you weigh the relative costs and benefits of additional concurrency analysis, STCA believes these points support lifting the moratorium, and we urge you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is William Porter. I live on 870 238th Avenue Northeast, Sammamish. My wife and I have lived up on the plateau for over 30 years. We're both approaching 80 years old now, and have expected to be able to sell about an acre of our land to a developer for financial reasons. The inability to do so because of this moratorium has caused our family some significant financial hardship, and we would hope that you would lift it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Farrar, and I live right here in Sammamish on 2222 246th Avenue Southeast. And I agree with what all the other people have said, and actually, especially the last gentleman. I have an opportunity in a couple of years, actually, I have an opportunity now that would enable me to do my retirement plan, and if the moratorium keeps going, it really does hurt me. And I think you guys have done a really great job with the city, the roundabouts. I love the roundabouts. And also, when the property next to me sold, initially, I was not happy about it, but it's actually really beautified our street, and the people that live there are lovely. And when my neighbors and I actually went and followed your procedures and submitted a form to say that as we come out of 246 onto 24th, it was like a blind hill, and boom, all of a sudden, American Classic was out there cutting down the hill. And they must have gone through you, and I want to say thank you very much, because when I pull out of there now, I don't feel like I'm going to get clipped. And my 16-year-old daughter, who's a new driver, I feel much safer about her. So I think that the roads have improved here quite a bit, and I do believe it's time to lift the moratorium and let us landowners, like the previous gentleman and myself, have the same benefits as the other people. And I think it's a beautiful town, and more people can enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Seeing none, go ahead and close the public hearing. Jeff, did you have anything, or you want us to just dive right into it ourselves?
Just one quick comment, just a clarification. If nothing else, I believe the city manager touched on this at the beginning of this public hearing. If the council this evening chooses to not extend the moratorium with the ordinance in your packet, you do not need to take any action on that. You can simply make any comments you wish to make, ask any questions you wish to ask, and then move on to the next item on your agenda.
I have Councilmember Hornish. Tom, are you there?
Now I'm on, sorry. I would like to make, I move that we extend the moratorium and not adopt the resolution as drafted, but add some exceptions, additional exceptions, to give some of the individuals relief. The exception I would propose, and I'll talk to the rationale in my talking through the motion, but the exception I would propose that we add that the town center subarea would be exempt if there is a development agreement in place to which the city has agreed. And number two, the rezoning of TCE that had been on the work plan for this year but held up because of the moratorium.
Can you repeat that, or have somebody else repeat it?
I've got it, I was scribbling it down. The motion was to extend the moratorium and add the following exceptions. The town center subarea would be exempt if a developer agreement to which the city has agreed exists, and the rezone area of Town Center E projects, which are on our...
Rezoned area?
Town Center E, which are on our docket.
Oh.
Okay, we can't have comments from the public, please. Thank you. Tom, did I get that correct?
That's my motion. You did, you got it perfect.
Okay. We need a second to discuss. Okay, we do not have a second. I'm waiting to see, we've got a little, is there another motion being proposed or not?
Is there another motion?
I don't know, Karen's over here scribbling fiercely.
Are you drafting it?
Are we pushing buttons or not, guys?
I don't know, I'm trying to figure it out. Councilwoman Ritchie.
Hey. I'm not hearing any other motions, so I would like us to move on to our next order of business.
I've got another light, though.
No, no, she's preparing one. Karen's preparing a motion.
Tom, go ahead.
I move that we adopt the resolution as is and add two more exemptions to exempt short plats and long plats from the moratorium.
So let me make sure I understand that, so that it's just the resolution as is and add the exceptions of short plats and long plats, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's not what I heard, unless you want to make an amendment. I heard long plats and short plats.
Tom, did that include the town center area of which you spoke?
The town center would not be exempted from the moratorium.
I'm going to second it, just so that we can have discussion on this. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Tom, do you want to speak to your motion?
Sure. The reason I'm trying to keep the moratorium on but give some relief to some of the individuals that are being impacted is because I believe we're at a critical juncture for our city. I think we need to, we've had the emergency moratorium, we're facing some very large number of dwelling units. We're trying to balance all the interests and mitigate the biggest impacts on our traffic from these very large dwelling units. And for that reason, I think we need to keep the moratorium on for the larger projects, but give some relief, because the larger projects have the most dramatic impact on our traffic.
I want to make sure if there's conversation going in the back of the room, that you just step outside the doors. Thank you. Go ahead, Tom, sorry.
Yep, no problem. The larger projects have the biggest impact. We have made progress on our concurrency methodology. I think that we can still do better, and because those larger projects have a bigger impact, I'd like to hold up on the larger projects to be able to continue and finish what we started a year ago with the new concurrency model. what we started a year ago with the new concurrency model.
Okay, I've got some buttons on. Councilmember Ritchie?
Thank you. Tom, I appreciate the sentiment, and we are trying to balance, it's my understanding from the work that the council has done over the past year, that we just voted on three motions, 16, 17, and 18, I believe, that now give us the position where we have a concurrency model that will be amended and tweaked going forward, but not to a point where it would require Department of Commerce review. We are at the point now where we are out of an emergency because we have a solution. I firmly believe we're going to be talking about traffic and concurrency for the next few months while we develop our V-over-C as prescribed in the motions that were just passed. Again, we're going to move to the TMP. We're going to have another chance after that to evaluate concurrency again. So my question is, what is it about your proposal that should specifically apply to one developer over another, and what is it about that developer that's going to be done in this next six months or year that is significantly different than other long or short plats? Why, what's the point of singling them out with their proposed work in Phase 1?
Okay, I've got Councilmember Valderrama.
Well, first of all, I have a question. Who seconded this?
I did.
You did? Shame on you. No, okay. On the proposed motion that's been seconded there, I concur with Councilmember Ritchie that I don't see a difference as to what will be applying to the Town Center for concurrency to any other place in our city. The work that we had promised originally when this came into being was, and my concern was originally that we have a plan. In October, we came up with a plan that it was going to be level of services at intersection, the entire previous council, and this council, who was present at that meeting, agreed with that. We then reiterated that. We then went forward on that work. February 13th, we had a big discussion about TMP versus doing the concurrency. We agreed that it would be concurrency, get this done. At that time, we wanted to get it done in July. And in fact, a number of you here were specifically saying, I don't want flip-flopping, I don't want people to be changing their minds of how we're doing. What started to happen in May is we began to start looking at different options, different views of adding on. The agreement was level of services at intersections. We've now come to a point where, a few weeks ago, we didn't know what we were trying to do. We were all here baffled, as was staff, and then we came forward and said, okay, let's try either yet again the Florida model that was asked for, or V-over-C. We gave to October 16th, if I'm not mistaken, to do that. I don't see how any of that is going to change what's going to be taking place in the case of the Town Center and moving that out. Frankly, if you look at the short plats, the last time I understood, we had 16 short plats that had a plot that were being held, two long plats, that's 18 parcels across the city. The major development and issue that's been for this moratorium has always been the Town Center. Singling it out, I think, brings us a lot of problems. Interestingly enough, The Seattle Times, I was picking this up September 9th, talked about the showbox and how the city tried to single out the showbox. And their comment that they put in there, you know, and I'll read the two paragraphs here. "When the lawsuit specifically called out Kashama Sowan for behaving in indigenous fashion, I had to laugh because that's her essential neighbor. Might as well sue a sea lion for eating salmon." But the difference in this case, that while council members are free to act as pure leaders and activists-
Stay your point.
Point of order.
Point of order, stay your point.
I do not believe what is being commented on is relevant to the motion at hand, and it should be upheld.
Your point is well taken.
What is the point? The point-
No, the point is, is point of order, it has to be germane to the motion, the motion-
It is germane, I'm trying to show, they have specifically singled out or are being called out.
That's not a decision the chair gets to make.
Yeah. So I'll appeal that.
No, Pam is appealing it.
I appeal.
Okay. All those in favor saying that this is germane, say aye.
Aye.
The proposed, nay.
Nay.
I said nay.
Okay.
Well, let me continue going forward.
You can't continue going forward.
I can't go forward on this, I can continue my argument, by God. So if you look at what we're doing here, and what's continuing to take place by singling this out, we continue to lock down the city. The Planning Commission has been coming with a housing strategy, one of our priorities. Stormwater is being held up as a result of this. They have continually said, by continuing the moratorium, even in that section, which is going to be the one that most affects for the water sediment and for the contaminants that are going to go down into the creeks and into affecting the Cockney here, we're continuing to delay work. On one hand, we're saying we have to solve these issues, on the other hand, we're continuing to tie ourselves behind. As I said before, we've got to get our heads out of our asphalt and move on. Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any more lights on. I'll make a-
Actually, I've got a comment. I want to answer Councilmember Ritchie's question, and I think I had answered that in my rationale for proposing this motion. It's because I'm trying to allow some smaller developments, and Councilmember Valderrama just mentioned the numbers, is relatively small, with two long plats and six short plats. I don't even know if that's the right number, but I don't really care. I think allowing them as an exemption to the moratorium gives some relief to some people. But I think by continuing it elsewhere, it doesn't single anybody out individually. It singles out the larger projects that we would have a bigger impact, like I said in my earlier comments.
Councilmember Stewart?
No, hold on a second, he's responded, I wanted to, but he did not answer my question, my question and the question-
He was talking to Councilmember Ritchie. He said he was answering Councilmember Ritchie's question.
Well, Ritchie's question, the same thing, is the one that we're asking is, okay, I understand the size, it's not under a different model.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so I think a number of our citizens over the course of the last, at least the last nine months, have expressed this best, and I think that Deb Zogee from the chamber, I think, really hit on this, is that this proposal would allow the spot development and the sprawl to continue, it would allow only development in a way that would go in and potentially continue or worsen the destruction of our existing neighborhoods, right? So we hear a lot from the community that they're concerned about our neighborhood character, and I think that that is a very valid concern, and that by opening up part and keeping another part closed, the Town Center part, that's where we can have the density, that's where we can absorb the growth, that's where we can absorb growth with transit options. Right now, one of the challenges we have in the city of Sammamish is that transit is not easy to make workable in all of our neighborhoods because of the type of sprawl we have, but that the development that happens in the Town Center, we can actually make transit work. We hear from the community repeatedly that people want services, they want to be able to, you know, go to dance lessons or whatever those things are in Sammamish, and not have to drive to Issaquah and Redmond during rush hour, during those peak hours. I think that by applying the moratorium in an uneven fashion doesn't make any sense. So I'm opposed to continuing the moratorium. We agreed back in January, when the four new members came on, that this concurrency process would be iterative. I know Councilmember Ritchie hates that word, but we did, we agreed it would be iterative. We've put in an iterative model, we've given ourselves a deadline to work on continuing to enhance that. We have to get to the TMP. We really need to get moving on that TMP, and I really believe that we need to lift this moratorium. We need to allow us as a council to move forward and get out from under this and be able to make progress on the city. We have a lot of business to take care of, and I do believe that while we do have a lot to balance, and I completely agree with that, we have a lot to balance, and continuing this moratorium will just continue to keep us ground to a halt. I have to be honest, that as a council member, I really hope to work on stormwater management and other issues that we all agreed were priorities when we came on to this council, and we created our priorities back in January, and the only thing we've worked on so far really has been this. And I feel a strong duty to the community that we get on to the other business of the city, and that we allow this moratorium to expire. So I'm, therefore, I'm opposed to this, to this motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Moran, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Moran.
Tom, I'm wondering if you would be interested in, I guess we were-
No friendly amendments, you can make an amendment.
I'm wondering if you're interested in an amendment, since there's nothing friendly. And that would be to add on the Town Center area, that would be under, our staff has put in a number of hours that they have worked on putting together some sort of agreement with the folks at Town Center, to work on some of the very tough issues that we've asked for, we've wanted, and I would, I would like to say that, I'd like to see that, they've come so far, to see if we couldn't see that to an end. So I'd like to see in the moratorium, to see long plats, short plats, and the area of Town Center that would have a, some sort of developer agreement with the city.
We're a memorandum of understanding.
They're different, so you need to specify-
Yeah, so memorandum of understanding, which, yes.
Which one, is it a developer-
Memorandum of understanding.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay, the proposed amendment has been moved and seconded. Discussion, Deputy Mayor Moran?
Can we repeat it, just to make sure everyone's clear, we have a habit of-
The Town Center area with, well, she originally said developer agreement, and now it's-
Memorandum.
MOU.
Yep.
Do you want to speak to your amendment?
May I just interject for a minute?
Yes.
So, just so we're clear, it's to add an additional exemption, well, three exemptions, short plats, long plats, and would it be all projects in the Town Center area where there is a memorandum of understanding in place covering such projects? Is that the, is that the concept we're going for here?
Is that sounding, I'm looking for the wording that you had used prior.
That would cover it.
Prior was development agreement, was the prior language.
Yes.
To which the city has agreed.
Yes, okay. I went with memorandum of understanding, but yes.
So, but you have Town Center with an MOU?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to speak to that, or your amendment, or?
I went with MOU only because of the fact that I, I do believe that it is, it is something that we can bring up a little, we can bring up on the second, if we want to push that button to switch that, to do, to something different, but I'd like to see them, you know, work out anything else that they need to.
Councilmember Valderrama?
Yeah, I would be receptive of that. It has been in the public domain that there have been discussions of council members on a memorandum of understanding, so that is a mechanism that people have known, can exist and be done, that I think we need to be moving forward, following on what Councilmember Stewart had said on the economic damage this is causing. I think those are the unintended consequences to date of what's taking place. We've heard about the personal damages on the short plats, we've heard about the businesses like the Carousel and others who are leaving our city because they're being forced out because there's no competition that's taking place. The true cost of this concurrency model, when you put the $1 million about for a fair pierce, the INRex data, the drones, and those, it's really in the millions of dollars just on the modeling that we've done today. We have chased away businesses that won't come into here. So for those that are looking at trying to help our community and have it as an economic growth center, we've been doing everything to push out, not to mention the concurrency and what it's going to do only fixing roads inside our city. So I would like to see us move forward on what was agreed to. We've all supported the Town Center as it was designed. I think we've had three motions that have been unanimously passed here. It's time to move on and start to allow this go forward, and as a compromise, I'd be willing to accept that amendment.
Councilmember Hornish?
Yes, I'm supportive of that, this amendment, because I think it does address, and if you look at the language and the ordinance closely, remember, this is, it's a moratorium on permit applications. So this allows the development in the Town Center to continue if there is an MOU, which then allows a developer in the Town Center subarea to make an application. And for that reason, I think it's a good compromise as well.
Mr. City Attorney, can I ask a question? Because an MOU is very different. Originally, we heard developer agreement. Developer agreement is legally binding, and MOU is not. What, can you explain to us what this looks like?
Well, I would be happy to explain it, but we're in an open public meeting, and out of concern for the city's attorney-client privilege and protecting the city in the event of future legal actions, I would respectfully decline that I not give that advice here.
Okay, should we, can we have an executive session, then?
I believe-
Go for it.
It's up to the council if you would like to have one.
I think, I'd like to understand the implications of this from a legal risk standpoint for the city.
I'd rather just go forward and vote. I mean, we've had so many of these executive sessions on this.
Councilmember Ritchie?
I support a quickie executive session to try to understand what we're getting ourselves into. I think that, while I support any compromise that tries to get things forward here, what I don't understand, Councilmember Moran's motion, and off of Councilmember Hornish's, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Moran's amendment on Councilmember Hornish's motion, what I don't understand is the timing. So I'm going to tell you what I think, and please tell me, but what I understand is trying to get done here is that we have a moratorium that's scheduled to expire on October 3rd. We're basically saying we have roughly three weeks, two, two and a half, three weeks, between now and then, to essentially negotiate a memorandum of understanding that is not legally binding, that once both sides in that rushed period could come to an understanding, if that's possible, at that point, the entire moratorium would be servicing nobody at that point. It wouldn't, no one would be covered by it, because everyone else would have been either part of an MOU or would fall under the short and long plats. Is that accurate?
Not quite.
I think that's part of what we have to talk about.
Whoever doesn't have an MOU in the Town Center would have to get the MOU.
Okay, so beyond that, I guess my question is, what is the, what happens if we do not achieve that goal of a negotiated MOU in that time period? Does the moratorium continue?
Mayor, may I ask another clarification? Is the intent, I guess I wasn't entirely clear. Was, is the intent of this motion, or amended motion, to add these three exemptions to the currently in-place moratorium, or is this a motion to renew the moratorium as the ordinance drafted in the packet says, but renew it with three new exemptions?
Well, the motion was to accept the resolution. So that would be to renew the moratorium, and then we'd be adding in additional exemptions to it. Is my understanding, through the original motion, which was short plats and long plats, and the amendment, which did the MOU.
Having an executive session?
I would like to have an executive session to discuss.
I would like to as well.
Can I, can I add?
Yes.
Add some clarification or question to Councilmember Ritchie? You captured it pretty well, but the part that I'm not sure, maybe agreeing with the summary on, is related to the rush to get the MOU. You mentioned it has to be done before the moratorium's lifted. I think the ball's in their court, if they get it done before the moratorium, or the August 3rd, if you will, great, but it could be later. They're still subject to the moratorium until they come up with an MOU under the motion. So it could be a month later. So I think the clock is, the level of quality and negotiation is between the parties on a time indefinite, and hopefully sooner than later. Did I capture that right? Is that what your intent is, Council, Deputy Mayor?
I'm glad you clarified that, because I wasn't under the impression it had to be done before. Okay. So we have-
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
Just as a point of clarification, make sure the council understands, I'm sure that you do, and don't mean to confuse us more, but the MOU is non-binding, so you might want to think in terms of whether you want to- might want to think in terms of whether, whether you want an MOU or a development agreement. My understanding of that, I could enter into an MOU tomorrow, so I could proceed, it could say anything, but I do not have to adhere to anything I've agreed to in the MOU. So that does open a window that you may want to move that to a development agreement. And again, if that amendment was the development agreement, while you're working on your V-OSC, we could be working on the development agreement, and until that is put in place, you would not have any, any movement going forward at, at that point, until that development agreement is signed and agreed to. So just a thought that you may want to take into consideration as you look at the, where you want to go with this.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Still would like to go to an executive session.
I will second that. Okay, all those in favor of calling an executive session, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Chris, were you an aye? Okay, so four, three, we are going to have an executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting to 10:30.
Chris.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting to 10:30.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of extending to 10:30, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six, zero, because I don't think Tom's on the phone yet, we'll extend to 10:30. Lita, do you have Tom on yet, or not? Okay, let's hang tight a quick second, till she's got him.
Tom's on.
Okay, very good. Tom, we extended to 10:30, just so you know.
All right.
Okay. So I just want to go back to where we left off, which was, we have an amendment for Town Center area, subarea with an MOU. That is an amendment to the main motion, which was a resolution to extend the moratorium with the exceptions of short plats and long plats. Is there any more discussion on the amendment? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, which is to add in the Town Center subarea with an MOU in place, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, can I have a vote of, a raise of hands on the nay? Okay, by a vote of five, two, it passes. Okay, so now we will vote on the motion as amended, which is a resolution to extend the moratorium with the exceptions of short plats, long plats, and then, of course, the amendment, which is Town Center subarea with an MOU. All those in favor, say.
Hold on, I got a question. I thought before that we said that in effect that this was taking off the moratorium, because once you take off the short plats, the long plats, and the Town Center with the MOU, I mean, what's left? We've exempted everything else before, so even using the words extending the moratorium, we basically have lifted it.
But you haven't unless somebody, unless somebody manages to have, is in the Town Center subarea and has an MOU in place.
That's correct, so, so, but saying extending the moratorium.
You can repeal the moratorium at any time, so.
Yeah, 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 we know how that goes. So, I mean, reality is, why are we extending the moratorium? Why don't we just say that we've lifted the moratorium with the exception of the Town Center? I mean, it just seems to be counterintuitive.
I think that would be different than what we're doing. David, do you want to speak to that?
I got lost in the various dialogues.
Since we've exempted everything in the past, ADUs, government buildings, et cetera, et cetera, all that was left in the moratorium were the short plats, the long plats, and the Town Center. Everything else had been, today we're talking about exempting short plats, which should have always been exempted, long plats, and the Town Center with the, for those that have MOUs, that develop MOUs. So instead of saying we're extending the moratorium, shouldn't it be we're lifting the moratorium, except for the Town Center that has MOUs, because everything else would then be lifted?
Well, I guess I would want clarification from staff if there are other categories of things that would still fall within, or outside of the carve-outs that are currently in the, in the moratorium.
And does it matter? I mean, is it six to one, half does the other?
Wouldn't Councilmember Valderrama's question require a new moratorium?
That was kind of, yes, so there is a difference in it. So you do need to extend the moratorium with these exceptions built in, even if.
No, I'm saying that, I thought the wording that you just read was extend the moratorium.
It is, that's the resolution that we have in front of us right now, which is a six-month extension of the moratorium. The amendments and the motions have carved out additional exemptions, in addition to what we already have as exemptions in the moratorium. So you can't.
So we would extend the moratorium just on the Town Center, in effect, with MOUs to get them out, correct?
That would be the effect of, if you didn't renew the moratorium, then there would be no moratorium. So if you, you would have to renew it in order to keep any exceptions to it.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. I appreciate the intent of trying to find a compromise. I'm in favor of compromises where possible. I also believe in negotiating in good faith. I do not believe this motion that specifically calls out a specific landholder for specific actions to try to get out from a moratorium that is being released for everyone else is appropriate, it is negotiating in bad faith, and I don't think it's good policy for the city. And I disagree with this motion entirely.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, two things. One, I think the city attorney asked a great question. I don't know if staff is prepared to answer that or not on the spot. Sorry, Jeff, to put you on the spot, but if this motion were to pass as currently written, what would be left in the moratorium?
So what I can think of, off the top of my head, would be Town Center, any Town Center parcel that is not subject to that exception that's been proposed, and the, the rezoned applications that Councilmember Hornish proposed an exception to earlier this evening.
Ooh.
So which rezoned?
The rezones, the Town Center.
Rezone applica, rezone applications.
So it would keep, it would keep all of those, sorry, I'm, the, all of the items on the docket would still be under moratorium? Is that correct? All of the docketed?
The two, the two items on the docket that require a rezone application to complete, that's correct.
What are the?
Of course, any new ones that could be docketed at a future point while this is still going on.
What are the two, aside from the Town Center E-zone? Two on the docket for rezones?
The city-owned Boys and Girls Club property.
Ah, okay. And, and Councilmember, Councilmember Ritchie, I want to, I think you raised some great points, and also, you know, again, looking at the Town Center, when, when the four of us who are new were all running for office, we all said that we had a priority for affordable housing for our police, our fire, our teachers, you know, the folks that actually do work in Sammamish. And I, and I think that the only way we achieve any kind of affordable housing is through the Town Center. I don't think anything else in our city at this point is even remotely in the realm of affordable. So I just, you know, it's, it's not the Town Center at all costs. I know I'll be misquoted somewhere, and that's not what I'm looking for. We have, we have modified our concurrency, we have made an iterative step, we have made it more rigorous. We're going to continue to work on that, so that, you know, we're not opening a floodgate in every development going forward, you know, we can continue to do that. The TMP is going to be key to that, but I really feel like we've got to be able to allow this Town Center to start moving forward, so we can learn more through these applications, and we can make progress. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
Well, I couldn't agree more with Councilmember Stewart, so, and this does that. So I'll be, of course, voting for it.
Okay, I think I'd actually like to make another amendment. I'd like to add in the docketed rezoning items. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Councilmember Stewart.
Got to ask the same question, then, what's left in the moratorium?
We already had that discussion.
Well, but we just took out the thing that was left, right?
The splinter.
Push buttons, please.
So, so that means.
I've got mine pushed.
Okay.
Everything is exempted, right?
Not unless you have an MOU. All right. Councilmember Hornish.
Yeah, I want to address that question as well as Councilmember Ritchie's question of why, or his point, or his statement that we're singling out an individual. We are not singling out an individual. We are singling out the most dense developed area in our city that's going to have the biggest impact on our traffic, that says there is still a moratorium on it unless you have an MOU in that area, which is going to be probably, I'm, I'm just throwing a number out there, 40%, if not more, of our growth here in the next 10 years.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
Well, my question, I guess, is for the attorney. I'm looking at the ordinance, and it says to me that we are having a hearing tonight to extend the moratorium. So I go back to all my emails, and the emails that I have that say I am full supportive of extending the moratorium. I mean, I'm looking at if we had not been, if we'd been having a hearing that was on not extending the moratorium, I think we would have had a different group of people here tonight. So I'm, would we be, if we'd, we'd have to have a different hearing if we were going to be, if we were going to be lifting the moratorium?
I don't believe so, because the default option is that the moratorium will expire in three weeks, or on the 3rd. So I think that's, that's going to happen whether you do anything tonight, well, that's going to happen unless you do something tonight. So I think, I think your public hearing was appropriate for this action.
Councilmember Ritchie. Again, we're, we're discussing the amendment, which is to add the docketed rezones, incidentally.
So the docketed rezones, okay. Does that include any neighborhood, any development outside of Boys and Girls Club, any neighborhood subplot, short plots?
No, Jeff said there were two. One is the Boys and Girls Club, and the other is Town Center E-zones, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, those are the two docketed rezones.
So point of order, Councilmember Hornish referred to my question, or my statement that was not about that during this. So am I following Robert's rules of order if I reply to his statement about that, without talking about the docketed issues?
I'm not sure where you're going to go, so go ahead.
With all due respect to Councilmember Hornish, what I see as a problem for our traffic are spot developments happening all around the community on an ongoing basis. The purpose of the Town Center, one of the purposes of the Town Center, is that it is a transit-oriented development where we can focus transit in a specific area. To me, that's a really big deal. That's something that I, I support, and I'm, I'm hopeful that that will be included in any agreement going forward, and I'm hopeful that that will be something that the SGA continues to build out and focus on as they hopefully move forward with this development. What I don't understand is how we are stopping transit development, transit-oriented development, and yet we are acting as though we're saving traffic, we're, we're helping traffic. We are not in a position where we're talking about having 2,000, 5,000, 10,000 people moving there within the next year. This is a phased development, and what I'm concerned about is that we're, we're focusing on the, the long-term project rather than the short-term phase one, which is what's in front of us. And what I'm, what I want to focus on is what is going to be built out in phase one of the SGA that would fall under our interim concurrency model, which is V-OSC with intersections, followed by the rest of our process, where the other parts of the SGA come in.
I hate to do, I hate to do this, but I have a point of order.
Yes, we're talking about.
We're not talking about the amendment for the docketed rezones, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's, that's.
I, that was responding to his statement to me, which was not about the docketed items either.
Okay, I think if we have discussion on the amendment right now, which is to add the docketed rezoning items, then let's, let's get those, and then we can move on to the discussion relative to the overall motion as amended. So, Councilmember Stewart.
I don't know if this falls into that, but it's a question about scope, again, which is, what about the Sound Transit Park and Ride? Would that be, would that fall under any of the exemptions or the proposed amended exemption, or is it still going to be tied up?
I don't, I don't know anything about the Sound Transit Park and Ride. I think my understanding was the funding disappeared for that a while ago, and we were not getting, I realize that Deb Sogi had a conversation with them. That is my latest understanding. This is the first I've heard that Sound Transit Park and Ride is still in play. So I can't speak to.
Well, so I'm not asking about funding, I didn't ask that.
I don't know, is my.
So I'm asking staff or the city attorney, and Jeff has his hand up. Thank you, Jeff.
No, three fingers.
So existing exception E includes permits and approvals for government facilities and structures.
So that would fall under that, okay.
I'm sorry, it would fall?
It's already exempted, it sounds like. But if the Town Center, does that, just, again, to clarify from the city attorney, since specifically we're leaving the moratorium on the Town Center zone unless there's an MOU, does that exemption apply to the Town Center zone? It feels like we.
Point of order, the only thing we're supposed to be discussing right now is the amendment as to whether or not we want to add the docketed rezones.
It was a point of order, that we, we need to, we need to be discussing the amendment, which is adding the docketed rezones. If somebody wants to make another amendment, we can do that, but we need to vote on this amendment. So if you have discussion point on this amendment, do, is that, okay, no, your lights off. Okay, very good. Okay. So all those in favor of the amendment, which is to add docketed rezones, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
So is that two? Okay, so by a vote of five, two, we will add that amendment as well. Now we will go back to the main motion as amended, which now has the docketed rezone items, the Town Center subarea MOUs, short plats, long plats. Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
So this is a question, I believe, for our city attorney. So we have, we have a, an ordinance that says we're going to extend the moratorium with the following exceptions, with more exceptions, unless you're in the Town Center zone, and then you need an MOU. So I want to understand how legally one reads that. Would the, would the government facilities or a park and ride fall under the exemption, or does it fall under the not exempted because it's in the Town Center zone and it would then require an MOU? I just want to make sure I can.
I think the, I think the more specific exemption would apply, and so if it's talking about a government facility or structure.
Awesome, thank you.
Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, transit-oriented development is exempted from most of our, many of the moratoriums already, so I would move that we exempt from the Town Center transit-oriented development park and rides, and given what we've heard today of the time sensitivity.
Is that an amendment? Because we have a motion already. So your amendment is what?
So that we exempt in the Town Center, that's all that's left, those properties that have to deal with transit-oriented development, which would include the park and ride.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Valderrama, yep, do you want to speak to your motion?
So, for two reasons. First of all, that's what we continually push, that's what we have as our priorities. We've heard from Deb Sogi today from the Chamber of Commerce, her conversations and a time sensitivity to get transit-oriented development going here, so that we can have the investment of transit here, which is one of the big issues that we've had for, for since inception. Additionally, what it's been able to do is by showing that we're moving on it, then those entities, Metro, et cetera, can start to look and getting it in their budget cycle. So I think that it's timely, and it would behoove all of us to move quickly on this.
Okay, Councilmember Ross.
Transit-oriented development.
Transit-oriented development, we've been using that term very loosely and I don't think it applies to what's being produced for the town center right now. It, it requires proximity to high, you know, high-density, high-quality train systems and other amenities, which is not in the vision. It requires reduced cars per unit. And so, there is some specifics that are more conventional transit-oriented development. And so, if we use that term loosely without defining it, I think we're going to leave a very vague, open question.
Okay. Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah. Our complaint...
Wait, wait, wait. I had my butt gone.
...involved in it to begin with, so...
Okay, sorry. Hold on. Sorry. I, I missed it that, because he's... Councilmember Hornish.
And, and we're going around the second time.
Yes, please. Councilmember Hornish.
Councilmember Ross, amen. We use that term way too loosely. This is not what we're looking at in the town center. However, I am fully supportive of having a transit center in our town center and I think if somebody wants to do that, if they want to come forth in an MOU, then they can do, they can make an application.
Now, Councilmember Valderrama.
Yes, the original comp plan and the design of the town center didn't have the transit component built in and that was something that was neglected on the part of the city. We have an opportunity to correct it. We have a short time window to work to address it. We have the developer who has been out and publicly making known that he's been engaging with them and the Chamber of Commerce is telling us, if you want to get into their budget cycle, you've got to start working now with them. So, I understand that it's normally taken a much greater process, but previous councils and planning had omitted that component. And so, what I don't want to happen now is that we end up losing the opportunity.
Councilmember Stewart?
I don't, I don't believe that transit-oriented development requires rail. I think it requires a proximity to a central transit, which can include bus or could include, again, a transit stop or, or a park and ride. So, it's not, it does not require rail.
I, I agree with you, Councilmember Stewart, but I said that my point was we loosely define it and per our discussion going on right now, it's not clearly defined.
I actually think there is a definition for it, a technical definition. I just don't think it includes that it has to be...
Well, I'm looking at one, for example, and it's different than yours, so...
Councilmember Ritchie.
It's my understanding that the town center in and of itself, what is some of the things that distinguish it from the rest of the development in our city is that it is transit-oriented. Transit-oriented can be bus, it can be train. It's anything where you're getting cars off the road, individually-driven cars. So, I think the, the purpose is, not to speak for Councilmember Valderrama, but the reason I'd support this is that it would allow the town center to move forward inasmuch as the development in the town center is transit-oriented. I don't know how, I, my understanding of what the town center, the purpose behind it and having the density there, other than having affordable housing clustered and business growth, is that there would be an opportunity for there to be larger numbers of people to catch a bus going to Redmond, catch a bus going to Amazon or wherever they're going. And so, I, I think that the town center is designed to be a hub for mass transit so that we can take cars off the roads. It is transit-oriented development in a vague way. We can quibble over what the definition is, but transit-oriented development, as I see it, is what the town center is intended to do inasmuch as we're trying to reduce single-occupant vehicles in our city. So, I support the amendment inasmuch as it accomplishes our goal of reducing traffic and at the same time, meeting our GMA requirements.
I don't think anybody is disagreeing on our desire for transit in the town center. I think the point I'm making is the MOU can cover plans for that element. That, that way, we don't get quibble over a deficient definition. But what the motion was to have TOD in the town center exempted, that's going to be very confusing to apply and interpret. What's clear to interpret and apply is in an MOU that we're going to do this, this, or this, and then agree on it and work, move forward on it and achieve our mutual goals.
Okay. I have Councilmember Valderrama.
I was going to pull up, if you look up the moratorium that Iskwa had and has taken off, they have release ADUs, they have released transit-oriented development. It was just a simple sentence that they had and I'm not doing any different than what's standard across the state.
Councilmember Hornish.
I pulled up RCW 43 dot, 43 dot 21C dot 420. It says basically, trying to describe transit-oriented development. It needs to be near a major transit stop and major transit stop is defined as A, high-capacity transportation service funded under the provisions of chapter blah, 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 high-capacity, commuter rail stops. B, C, stops on rail or fixed guideway system including transit ways. D, stops on bus rapid transit routes or routes that run on HOV lanes. Or E, stops for a bus or other transit mode providing fixed route service that entails at least 30 minutes. I don't know of any of those five things that says it's a major transit stop that is even remotely planned for what we're talking about in the transit center at this point, nor is it even in our plan for the town center. So, I don't think this makes any sense.
Okay. I don't have any more lights on. So, Councilmember Valderrama, could you please repeat your amendment? Because I'm not sure I transcribed it correctly.
So, no, I didn't write it down. Basically, I don't know if, if Lita had caught that.
Add an exemption to the town center developments that are TOD? Is that...
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure I got it right. Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
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 Okay. I think I may need hands on that one. Who are the ayes?
Aye.
Okay. Nays, okay. So, by a vote of four to three, that fails, or three to four, it fails. Okay. So, we're back to the main motion, which is to extend the moratorium and add in additional exemptions of short plats, long plats. And we have the amendments, which was town center subarea MOU and the docketed rezones. Any more discussion? Councilmember Stewart?
Sorry. Councilmember Ross, you, you brought up a point when you were talking about the transit-oriented design just a minute ago, or when you were addressing this. Can you restate it? Because it made me think of a question, but it wasn't related to the amendment and I can't remember it, so I'm trying. See, this is what happens when we go past 10 o'clock.
So, precisely, you want me to describe why I think it should be part of the MOU versus defining it as an exemption?
Yes, that's it. Perfect. That's all I needed to hear. Thank you. So, I guess...
That's the distinction.
Perfect. Thank you. So, that is a question is that if we require an MOU, and maybe this to the city attorney, does that need to be, do we need a template so that it's standard, so that it's the same for everyone? How does that work?
You can make the requirement in the ordinance more specific if you want. I mean, an MOU is something that two parties sign, so expressing their understanding. If you want to have more specific elements of that MOU, you can hash those out.
Councilmember Ross?
I guess I didn't make the motion to include it in the MOU, but it can be an element of the MOU. So, each individual party doing an MOU can or does not necessarily need to have a transit or a...
Understood. I just, it made me think that if we're going to include that as an exemption, in, in the spirit of being fair, that do we need to have a set of criteria that is negotiated for every MOU? And that's, I, I don't know. That was my question, so...
Okay. I don't have any more lights on. Oh, okay.
To Councilmember Stewart's question that she just posed, I would offer that you would not want to have a set template for that type of agreement because by way of example, you may have, somebody approached the city who has ownership or control of a group of town center A-zone parcels and the types of things that you may be talking about with that particular property owner or holder will be very different than another property owner or holder that has town center C-zone parcels or some combination of B and C-zone parcels. So, there's, there's, the consistency is probably inconsistency in the types of dialogues and issues that might be discussed.
Got it. Thank you. Go ahead. Make that motion.
Motion to extend for until 11 o'clock.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. By a vote of seven-zero, we'll extend until 11:00 PM. Okay. I don't have any more lights on. So, try this one more time. The motion on the floor as amended is a resolution to extend the moratorium for another six months with the exceptions added to the already existing ones of short plats, long plats. And the amendments were for town center subarea MOU and the docketed rezoning items. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. By a vote of six-one, it passes. All right. Let my agenda back out here. Okay. We will now go back to item 15, which is the public hearing related to the adoption of Samamish Homegrown and Incorporated by reference into the Samamish Comprehensive Plan. Mr. City Manager.
Members of the council, at your September 4th meeting, you received the 2018 Housing Strategy, which is titled Samamish Homegrown, A Plan For People. This represents a large body of work that was conducted on the, by your Planning Commission and the Human Services Commission. You also had a lot of assistance from staff and arch on this and that you are scheduled to hold a public hearing this evening. And as we discussed before, you would receive that input. And then, to gain a better understanding of this housing strategy, you were going to schedule and have scheduled a joint work session on October the 9th with the Planning Commission and you'll take the issue back up there and determine what the next steps are after that meeting. So, with that, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it back to you for the public hearing.
Do we have anyone signed up? Yeah, okay. So, I'm going to open the public hearing. I have Randy Bannaker. I, I do have a list. Randy Bannaker? Nope, not here. Paul Stickney?
A little bonsai? He brought vegetables?
You got to pass one down, Karen. I know you want to, but...
Well, thank him. Why two?
Good evening, councilmembers. Paul Stickney, 22626 Northeast Inglewood Hill Road. Have a presentation tonight. I want to get queued up. Everybody wants to avoid the hardest thing we have to face and that is knowing what our internal needs are over time, which we have never learned as a city. Can I get, before I start my time, can I get my thing up? Okay. Good. This is, this is part two. I'm going to say this quick because this is about a five-minute presentation. I'll say it in two or three and I'll leave the sheet for you. I suggest that we pause the Housing Strategy Plan as a community, that we resolve to change comp plan land use numbers and move as a city from a 19-year position with as little growth as possible to the lower, medium, optimal place. I have sent a lot of information in that explains what this means. The city has never carried out the CHU that I talked about last week. We don't know our housing needs gaps. We've never done statistically valid surveys to know what people want. We haven't talked about the pros and cons of meeting those needs. We haven't talked about the consequences of meeting those needs over time or gotten fully informed community consensus because we do not know the information. Make changes to the comp plan numbers, then pick up the Housing Strategy Plan. When would it have been appropriate to know needs, gaps, pros and cons, consequences, and consensus? There were 15 times from 1999 to 2015, it would have been appropriate where it could have been done. And since 2016 till now, it should have been done close to another 15 times. The city has chosen to not inform its housing policies with this crucial information. So, there are three errors in the comp plan. The Samamish growth target was negotiated with King County without knowing anything about our internal needs or wants. Two, our estimated land capacity is way too low in the comp plan. The actual zoned capacity is way higher and that's something we as a city need to know and have to manage. And three, these numbers are the most important. After knowing the CHU and what we can really end up with at single-family housing, we have to make a choice as a community, how much we, downzone housing types, we have surpluses of, upzone housing types, we have shortages of, and then right-size economics based on balanced housing over time. Why? So, over 8,000 people can stay and traffic will go down. The wealth benefits and advantages are huge. We can't do over town center or the city and this will align with state reasons. I'd like to close with, if we move as a community from level two to level four, which is low and modest, housing for generations to come, cycles of life, will be much, much, much better in Samamish. Financing, much, much better. The environment, much better. Character and I, and identity, better. And transportation, less worse. It's time to get cracking on changing the comp plan.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else that would like to address the council?
Yes, I would. John Galvin, 19502 Southeast 16th Street, Samamish. I think the housing plan is fundamentally important. There's a direct correlation between land use and traffic. Single-use decentralized suburban development creates a heck of a lot of traffic. That should be a fundamental principle understood by everyone on the city council. I'm very concerned that, given what we just saw a few minutes ago, that there's probably a snowball's chance in hell that this housing plan will go very far. We have a moratorium with all these exemptions and then suddenly added on a new requirement that nobody understands. No mention of a UZDP, no mention of all the years that went into planning town center, which was the one way that the city would start to address the housing issues. You know, it's just unbelievable what we just saw. So, I have very little hope that this planning process is going to go anywhere where as long as this council is sitting there, making decisions. And that's a shame because I think a good job was done there. And I think Mr. Stickney is bringing up some very important issues. You know, I mean, it's really, really appalling. We have an emergency ordinance with no emergency. We have exemption after exemption and all of this is related to this housing plan. You know, it's really mind-boggling, you know? And I wonder if any of you know what a UZDP is? I didn't hear it mentioned once. You know, and then they need to aggregate land to develop the housing that people are asking for. I mean, it's just unbelievable, you know? So, we have a moratorium going forward with...
In your packet, November 6 was identified as a date to which it could be continued to a date certain if the council chooses.
Do you need a motion on that?
I have a light on. Councilmember Ritchie.
I would like to move that we extend the public hearing, keep it open until November 6, 2018. That will give us sufficient time to review this document and to have our joint meeting with the Planning Commission.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Ritchie, did you want to speak to your motion?
I just did. I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Hornish.
Sorry, take my button off.
Okay. All right, I don't have any more lights on, so all those in favor of extending the public hearing to date certain of November 6, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of 7-0, we will continue the public hearing on November 6. Okay. Now, we will move to unfinished business.
I'd like to move to adjourn.
We have, no, I, there's, okay.
And if you have time, we still have one legal matter we need to discuss with you.
Yeah, we have the other part of that executive session.
It's not on the agenda, though.
We can always add an executive session, and there's an executive session if needed at the end of the agenda.
Did you second?
You did. Oh, did I?
Well, I did not second. I have new business.
Okay. So do I. Okay. So, under unfinished business, we have the item that was pulled off consent, which was item number seven, and that's the City Brand. And actually, I would move that we table this item to a date uncertain, because I think branding and adopting our new logo are probably not of utmost importance right now.
Thank you.
Second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of tabling this to a date uncertain, say aye.
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 Nay.
Okay, by a vote of 6-1, we will table this. All right. Do we have anything under new business? Or we bring up something under council reports? Okay. Oh, Jason? Councilmember Ritchie?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it requires a motion or not, but it may be tradition. I defer to the city manager to tell me, but if it requires a motion, I would like to move that we rotate the newsletter that goes out every, frequently to, or, you know, the mailings that go out to our citizens, that the mayor's message be turned into a council member's message, so that we can rotate that amongst council members. And I don't know if that's a motion, because it's part of our code, or is that just your tradition that we can change, but that's something I'd like to discuss.
I think that's strictly up to the council, what your preference area is on communication, so...
I think it's just been tradition. Jason, I don't think there's anything embedded in code, and in all honesty, you know, it usually worked with a communication director on what that message was, so... Did you have, your light's still on, do you have more? Are you good?
That's my motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Deputy Mayor Moran.
Well, I have a couple concerns. I don't want to take a turn. So, that's my number one concern. I don't want it to come around to me. So, I don't know what we'd do on my month. So, that would be one. I mean, because some months I'd have, I'd have something to say, but I'm not a big writer. And so, then the other thing would be is, we would have to come up with some ground rules, of course, of, you know, I don't know what the ground rules are of, you know, everybody have to sign off, like we currently do, or whatever, so I would suggest that we just somehow have some, whether go to Communications or whatever committee, for them to come up with some guidelines or whatever, and then bring it back.
Is that an amendment that you'd like to make?
Oh, just an amendment.
Yeah.
Nothing friendly about it.
So you're proposing that the, who writes it, and what the content is, and how it gets referred to committee, is that your amendment?
Correct. And how it would perhaps, you know, how it would take turns and that sort of thing. That group would take a look at it and bring it on back.
Okay, so to make sure that I get your amendment right, your amendment is to send it, create another ad hoc committee, or it wouldn't be an ad hoc?
No, we have a communications committee.
You wanted to go through committee? Which committee?
Communications, probably.
Communications committee. Okay. All right, Councilmember Ross.
I'd like to amend that, adding that it's paired up with the total communications strategy. Again, since we lost our communications manager, we need to...
Hold on, I think we have an amendment that we have to vote on first before we add yet another amendment. But I want to, I want to speak to the motion and the amendment here, too.
But don't we need a second before we speak to it?
Did we have a second on your amendment? I thought we did.
The main one's been...
Can I, can I point a clarification, or I don't even know if that's a thing? What is your amendment?
She wants to send it to committee.
Which committee?
Communication, she wants to send it to Communications.
On Communications.
I am, Pam is, and Tom Hornish.
Okay.
Or what, he was. He's not anymore. So I don't know who it is, no, I don't know.
We have a two-person committee.
No, Communications was never...
Would you be willing to consider, sorry, would you be willing to consider going to Governance, because that is a standing committee that has three members?
What, but, we, no, but Tom wasn't on Communications. He was on Governance.
I don't know who's on Communications.
Who's on Governance?
Madam Mayor, if the council would prefer, I could develop you some guidelines, and I could submit those to you at your next meeting for you to consider.
I like that much better. I'll withdraw my motion. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
I also want one other quick thing, just for consideration. Our newsletter does not come out monthly anymore. I don't know how often it comes out, but that should be a point of discussion, too, because that might, you might not get, I don't know if it's every other month, or if it's every quarter now, I don't remember, but just so we make sure that we get through the full round, because if you only have six, then not everybody gets one a year. Okay. So...
Do you want to deal with this watershed?
Yes, I think we need to, because there is a date that they need these by.
It is, it is.
And then, Jeff, if you have that paperwork that I need.
I can't wait.
No. Okay, down there. Okay, so the Department of Ecology, I think, did everyone have that up at the dais? There was a, we're being asked to provide, thank you, committee members, it's sitting up here. So this is through RIAA8, and we're being asked to, thank you. Sorry, I just lost my place on this one. It's the Watershed Restoration Enhancement Committee. We don't have to provide someone to sit in, but there's actually three different committees within this. So there's the residential construction, there's the, whoops, I only have part of the letter, there's environmental, and there's one other one. If I can find my original letter.
Basically, they're looking for the city's interest and for you to appoint those representatives of what...
Okay, so there's the residential construction, environmental, and agriculture. If we want to nominate representatives, then we have to submit those, and those have to be in by September 21st.
Is there one or three people that they're looking?
It looks like you could have, we could technically have three different people if we wanted to, so if you want to nominate yourself for one of these...
So what are they again? I'm sorry.
So there's residential construction, there's not, it doesn't give a whole lot. It says, "A representative designation by a local organization representing the residential construction industry within the water resource inventory." One representing environmental interests within, okay, in the environmental one, Karen. And then, one representing agricultural interests. And we can have a nominee and a secondary person, too, as well.
I'll be the alternate for the environmental interests.
Okay.
Which works out, because I, oh, that's just when we need to have it in.
Okay. And then there is, they do have, the first meeting is next month in October. Is anyone else interested? Okay, Councilmember Ross. You have your light on. Okay. Okay, residential. Councilmember Ritchie.
Yes, is this limited to members of the council only, or members of the community, Planning Commission? I'm not seeing that that's...
It says invite the city of Samamish to join, and so I assume, because it came here, that it's not open to the community at large, but I don't know that for sure.
I read it a little bit more vague and broadly. Are we nominating, well, I think we should get clarification on that, because I don't see enough people getting involved, so... I mean, if we can nominate folks that are not on the council, then I'd like to nominate Mark Baughman for the residential construction position. He is a member of the Planning Commission, and he would be an asset on that poll, I think.
I would, I think we should probably check with him, make sure he wants to do it, but I would certainly support that, yes.
I agree. I'm saying we need to check to make sure that we're not just looking at us seven, we ought to be looking at 65,000. It's not clear, at least to me.
Okay. Well, we can, Mr. City Manager, would you just check with that and find out if it has to be an elected official, if it can be anyone? I mean, I think submitting the names, they have to be in by September 21st, otherwise we don't have any spots, so we should check with Commissioner Baughman.
I'll check that. The way I read that is each area and cities are invited, but I think they're asking for people with those specific backgrounds, so I think you're looking at the general populace of your community to find somebody with those backgrounds to appoint.
I agree, yeah.
At least, that's the way I read it, but I'll check that out to make sure.
Okay. So, we have two people, I think, we have Karen and Mark Baughman for residential construction, assuming Mark wants to do that. And then, for environmental interests, we have Karen and Pam. Is there anyone else interested? There's also the agricultural interests. Nope. Okay. Do we want to formalize that with a vote, or just submit those? Okay. Good? Okay. All right. Okay. One last order of business before I think we head off. Well, Mr. City Manager, did you have anything else under your city manager's report?
No, I did not.
No, okay. And how are we on time? So, so, I have a motion to make, actually, and I think you all have the paperwork in front of you. This is an ordinance for the city of Samamish adopting interim development regulations regarding the design and construction of short plats and subdivision as authorized by the Growth Management Act. I think we all had a little primer on this with staff, but we have Jeff Thomas and David Pyle here to walk through it with us. So if council has questions, I think they can probably answer that. Jeff, do you want to go through this?
Yep.
Okay.
So, not through that actual document that...
It hasn't been seconded, though, incidentally, just so everyone knows.
Oh, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
We've got a short slide deck that will put a lot of words into pictures for you, and David's gonna move through it here briskly.
Okay.
And it will cover the subject areas that you've previously looked at. David?
Madam Mayor, so as not to interrupt, David, can I move to extend to 11:30? Because we have an executive session after this, so...
Just cover it. We have an executive session.
11:30.
I'll second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, there were jackhammering, it's a very odd hour. Yeah, good call. What's up with that? Okay, all those in favor of extending to 11:30, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of, I'm not even sure if Tom voted or not, I'm assuming that was 6-1. We will...
I was on you, but aye.
Okay, 6-1. We will extend to 11:30.
I don't want to have to interrupt, David. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Malchon, members of the council, David Pyle, Community Development. In front of you, you have a proposed ordinance for interim development regulations that includes changes to those rules that largely affect how we see developments build out here in the city, specifically with regard to subdivisions and some infill development with new single-family. On the agenda and on the list of items included and covered by that ordinance are residential setbacks, building height, building facade height, masquerading, parking, fences, street frontage requirements, and density. The first of those is setbacks. As you can see from this graphic, some of the development that we've experienced in the city has resulted in some very dense conditions that we have had to deal with neighbor complaints, et cetera, over the years. And we've also had many complaints during the development process from existing neighbors regarding the change in character. So this one is, I think, self-evident in the graphic. What this does is it creates a street setback, a rear yard setback, and a side yard setback, which is more of a standard form to other cities, whereas currently, we have a street setback and an interior setback. And what it also does is it increases the numerical values of those setbacks to a lot size that is more typical to past patterns here in the city, as compared to what we currently have, which would yield about a 4,400-square-foot lot in the R4 zone. We would end up with about a 6,800-square-foot lot in the R4 zone.
Yeah, can you explain why one side yard setback is 10 feet and another one is 15 feet?
Yes, in this case, what we do also account for in our code, and we always have accounted for in our code, is some flexibility for a developer to cite a house in the proper location on a lot. Currently, we have a scenario where you have to have a 5, a 10, and a 15, I believe that's what it is, I'm gonna have to go back and look, but actually, a 5, a 7, and a 15 is what's currently required, and we're proposing to move to a 10, 15, and 25.
Got it, okay.
And what that does is it allows the developer to choose whether they want to push the home to one side or another on a parcel.
Got it. Should we be concerned about the jackhammer?
The next one is how we measure building height. This is one of our most common complaints regarding development in the city, is that the city still uses the measurement from average finished grade, which allows for developers to artificially inflate the grade on a property through the use of fill. And you can see from this graphic that that can result in a much larger home than the surrounding zoning might otherwise allow. So you might have an existing home that then is required to, or existing home is faced by a new home built behind it that's much larger. This is another example of what we're proposing, is to move to average existing grade, which would capture the grade prior to the development, and would ensure that the home is built to the actual average existing grade, and would match the natural topography around the project. This is another example of the grade problem that we face. In this case, this shows how you could actually achieve quite a large home while still using average existing grade, but you would have to key it into the hill instead of creating a flat pad that it's built on. Note on this picture that the wall to the side of the driveway might actually end up being smaller because of this subsequent corresponding change regarding building facades. This is something that we hear a lot about here in the city. Older development that is smaller in scale is faced with new development that moves in next door to it, and one homeowner might be faced with a 40-foot-tall, four-story wall when they live in a one-story home. So what we're proposing, and this is overly simplified, but we're proposing some sort of architectural modulation to provide relief to that existing home, and ensure that we are not faced with oversized walls being built adjacent to existing development. The next one is masquerading, and this one has a lot to do with all of the different changes we're proposing. Masquerading can cause for some significant damage to our landscape setting. which would capture the grade prior to the development and would ensure that the home is built to the actual average existing grade and would match the natural topography around the project. This is another example of the grade problem that we face. In this case, this shows how you could actually achieve quite a large home while still using average existing grade, but you would have to key it into the hill instead of creating a flat pad that it's built on. Note on this picture that the wall to the side of the driveway might actually end up being smaller because of this subsequent corresponding change regarding building facades. This is something that we hear a lot about here in the city. Older development that is smaller in scale is faced with new development that moves in next door to it, and one homeowner might be faced with a 40-foot-tall four-story wall when they live in a one-story home. So, what we're proposing, and this is overly simplified, but we're proposing some sort of architectural modulation to provide relief to that existing home and ensure that we are not faced with oversized walls being built adjacent to existing development. The next one is masquerading. And this one has a lot to do with all of the different changes we're proposing. Masquerading can cause for some significant damage to our landscape setting. It makes it more complicated to retain trees. It also makes it more complicated to practice the truest form of low-impact development, which is just simply by not disturbing the soils and not disrupting the rate of infiltration of those soils through compaction and removal of topsoil. In this case, the pattern that we've seen historically in the city, or more recently historically, I guess you could say, is that a builder might come in and want to build, say, a 10-lot short plat, or I guess 10-lot plat. And what they would do is they would come in and masquerade out the site to create building pads that they could then provide for a building site for any one of multiple different home designs. What this will require is that a builder goes through more of a thought-out process around how they're going to actually build out a subdivision without grading it in advance and then thinking about the building product they'll put on it later. And it will also cut down on the amount of dirt that we're seeing moved around the city. This is an example of some homes that could actually be achieved through minimal masquerade, or minimal grading. One requires that the home be keyed into the hill through use of a daylight basement and a retaining wall. The other would require that there's a more specific or more thought-out approach to use of engineered walls and fill areas. The next one is parking. One of the current, common complaints that we receive is that subdivisions that are built out in order to minimize the amount of road being built, that there is no parking being provided, and that our code currently only requires two parking spaces be provided per home. And when you have a division of multiple homes on the end of a street, and there's no on-street parking, and someone has a party or some event, there's simply nowhere for any of their visitors to park. This is also a problem with larger families where they might have two or three or four cars, teenagers, for example. So, what we are proposing is that we put in place a requirement that each new residence that's being built accounts for one-off street parking, or one-on-street parking space, the equivalent of one-on-street parking space, which might result in something that looks like this. This one plan is from a recent project where we were able to convince the developer to put in place more than the minimum, which was the carrier subdivision here. The other is a sample from a subdivision that I'm aware of in, actually, in Snohomish County, where they're using the tot lot, parking lot, as neighborhood overflow parking. So, you could see that they could fit, you know, up to 10 cars in that parking lot if you wanted to. The next one is fences. One of the issues that we've heard about through public comment is that a six-foot-tall fence does not do much good in the backyard when you're faced with a 35-foot-tall home that's multiple stories tall, and that if there was just the ability to provide for a couple more feet of fence height that neighbors might feel they're being better screened or protected from their, you know, their privacy being provided. And what this would do is it would allow for a fence height of up to eight feet beyond the current six-foot allowance if you obtained a building permit. And what we're looking for there is that the fence height is, the fence that's up to eight feet between six and eight is demonstrating that it's being built to a point where it's not going to blow over or fall over and that it's being constructed of sound materials, et cetera. Six feet is largely seen in the building code to be, for a fence to be the height, doesn't require a building permit because you can construct a fence with common methods that won't fall over. But when you add additional height to it, we would want to see someone verify that they're actually assembling it properly and obtaining a building permit. You can see here how this would work is that within the side yard and the rear yard, you'd be allowed to go to eight feet. Within the front yard, you'd be restricted to four feet. And what that does is it provides for some additional privacy in the side and rear, but it also opens the neighborhood feel up in the front yard, and it also limits the amount of site obstruction that occurs with driveways. Another change is with regard to street frontage. You can see here, this is an example of some, one of the current projects we've seen where the homes are serviced by a private driveway. One of the complaints that we receive, and we realize that we end up owning these projects for the long term after the developer has gone, as do the citizens who live in these homes. One of the common calls that we receive when we have snowfall here in the city is from the person who lives by the white arrow, for example, saying, hey, when are you going to come plow my driveway? And people are not able to clear out their driveways. Another issue is with regard to the massing of trash cans and where do all the trash cans and recycle cans go? And it's a common complaint that we receive that, oh, my neighbor blocked my driveway with their trash can, or I can't get out because there's 10 trash cans at the end of our private driveway. So, this is an issue that we face daily, and we receive lots of calls about. So, in this case, we would be requiring that every property actually have a street frontage, 30-foot of street frontage. That's not to say that you wouldn't see a flag lot be developed, but that flag lot would end up having 30 feet of street frontage where the driveway would depart towards the back lot. So, that, we feel, provides for a minimum street presence. If anybody needed to have services or whatever delivered to their property, they would provide that connection to the street. The last one is with regard to density. The city had historically rounded up in the case of a partial unit. So, if you had, for example, 4.52 units, you would get five units. But if you had 4.49, you would get four. We have seen many scenarios put in front of us where applicants are acquiring rights from multiple adjacent properties, and they're moving the lines around through boundary line adjustments, and they're ultimately achieving an output of a higher number of units than would otherwise be achieved if they were doing it through a single project, for example. So, there are ways to manipulate the system when you round up in density, and you achieve ultimately a much higher density than what you would achieve if you were rounding down. I'm also not aware of many other cities that round up. And in this case, we are proposing that we would round down. And that's the end.
Thank you. I want to speak to my motion really quick, and I want to thank David specifically for compiling this. You know, I think when staff brought this forward, I think a lot of our residents think that their comments about proposed subdivisions or short plats go into a black hole. And this is evidence that our staff actually was really listening to our residents and hearing the complaints they had. I was hearing those complaints. I knowed forward them, and I've had conversations with Jeff and staff about, you know, the grading and how now suddenly I'm looking at a four-foot wall, and the fence is on top of that, and I'm in a fishbowl. And so, I really appreciate the time that you took to listen to our residents and compile all that and to come to this. So, thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so, the way that the moratorium is currently written, with the exceptions, not the one we just passed, but the one that's in place right now.
The super agency moratorium.
Right. Would, when we pass this, who will this be applicable to or who will be exempted from it? Because I know that we have this ability for people who had pre-apps and stuff like that. So, when this takes effect, who's, I guess, who's grandfathered and who isn't?
We have metered out any of those pre-app meetings from last year that were part of, the one exception in the existing moratorium. Those have all now either executed themselves into a permit application or they've expired themselves out from the date of the pre-application meeting plus 180 days, right? 180 days. So, that's now been taken care of. So, what's in front of you right now for your consideration will be any pre-application meetings and development applications moving forward beyond October 3rd will be subject to these. So, actually, strike that. Forget about pre-application. Any pre-application meetings we have from tomorrow moving forward, we will be using these in the R zones, the ordinance that's in front of you. Any development applications now that are accepted from the moratorium, short plats and subdivisions, will be subject to these because we'll start looking at those beyond October 3rd.
Okay, thank you. One more clarification. So, if I remember correctly, we said that we were going to open back up for pre-app meetings some months ago, didn't we? So, would people who have come in for a pre-application meeting, would they be subject to these because they haven't filed their application yet, correct?
Correct.
So, there's really nobody in the pipeline that would not be applicable? So, people who either have their application or their permit, application completed, and then they're grandfathered. And if they don't have their completed permit application already submitted, then they're subject to this?
There's no middle, that is correct.
Okay.
There is no middle-of-the-road status at this point, either in or out.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Move to adopt?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? By a vote of 7-0, it passes. Thank you, David and Jeff. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And while Steve's running up to the podium.
Oh, my God.
So, this ordinance, it's being adopted by emergency. So, we have to have a public hearing within 60 days. The ordinance actually says in it, we've set the public hearing date for November 6 for this, which is within the 60 days.
Thank you.
Just a brief comment. Please don't take my comments as opposition. Just advising the council, some of these are going to be more technical in nature than some of the staff who inspect concurrently handle. We're talking about vertical, you know, proving and proofing elevations. There may be more consultant services required in the future to facilitate this, survey and engineering, inspection. Just want to make sure that is at least made aware.
Appreciate that.
Not that I'm, again, opposed to it. Just want to make sure you folks know what it takes to do the job.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, executive session. Yes, great. How long, David?
Three executive sessions in one meeting.
Okay. And RCW...
How long is it?